I want to thank you all for coming tonight. It's great to see a good turnout. Um, I just make a comment right now about the comments we've received in the open house and then I'll open the meeting. Is they've been wonderful. Um, people tell us why and that that's currency for us. It's great. Uh, you don't have to like it. Don't have to be for it, but tell us why. And that's uh, that I saw that. All my reading, I went to both open houses. They're fantastic. So we're looking for more tonight. We're here to listen. And with that, I'll open the hearing for the October 24th, 2023 meeting of the Snohomish County Planning Commission. And Megan, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Ash is absent. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Bustid. Vice Chair Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Eck.
Here.
Commissioner James.
I'm here.
Chair Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Namela. Commissioner Pedersen is absent. Commissioner Sheldon. And Commissioner Severs is also absent.
And we have a quorum. At this time, we'll move to approval of minutes for September 26th, 2023. Any comments, observations, suggestions for the minutes? Seeing none, I'll declare them approved. Now we moved into the actual hearing, the beginning of the hearing will be, we'll be hearing from staff. This is a comprehensive plan update hearing. And we will hear from David Killenstand, uh, long range planning manager. David, get away.
All right. Good evening. For the record, I'm David Killenstad, long range planning manager and planning development services. Want to welcome, uh, the commission and members of the public here to what is a big milestone in the evolution of the 2024 update or the county's update of its growth management comprehensive plan. Uh, this represents sort of a multi-year effort that began, uh, really before the pandemic, uh, started, uh, as we got on this journey. Uh, and what seemed like a long ways off, uh, is now here this evening, uh, in accepting testimony from you. Uh, I also want to echo, uh, what the chair said about written testimony. We have a considerable amount of that. Um, there's a lot there. And for the first time, uh, in, uh, in what we've been doing in planning of services, we've made that, that all that testimony available on our website so that the members of the commission as well as members of the public could, uh, look in, uh, and be able to see what, what you all are commenting on and what you are all submitting. So, um, a lot of what we've been doing with public participation leading up to this date, um, I hope as, as manager of the long range planning division to make the new norm. So really appreciate your turnout here and the turnout that we had. We had 240 people between our two open houses, which was outstanding to be able to continue to reach out in the community. These are very important decisions. Since night, uh, the commission will be taking testimony on changes to the comprehensive plan itself. That's both the maps, the future land use map that you see over there on the easel as well as zoning changes, uh, changes to the text, the narrative, goals, objectives, and policies, as well as docket applications and motions that the county council, uh, placed, uh, as part of the update, which included both map and non-map motions, uh, uh, map being changes to urban growth boundaries, non-map motions, uh, that were, uh, related to urban tree canopy as well as broadband policy. So, um, a lot to, uh, a lot, uh, it's a big project. There's a lot for everyone to absorb. Uh, staff, uh, did a lot of presentations of the commission here over the spring and summer, uh, and we're here, we're here at this date. So um, I'm going to turn it back to the chair because I think we want to all have an opportunity to start speaking and, um, hear from you.
Thank you, David. At this point in time, uh, we've got this instructions for our public testimony. Let me turn my mic on. Tonight there'll be a public hearing on the 2024 comprehensive plan update, including map and text amendments. We will first take, take testimony from those joining us in person, followed by those joining us online. In-person testimony will go in order of those who signed up. Uh, for those joining online, if you'd like to speak during the hearing, select raise hand at the bottom of the screen or press nine if you're calling in. When it's your turn to speak, the clerk will read your name or username. If you have signed up for, uh, signed up, uh, on, uh, anyway, you'll each have, let me reread this. When it's your turn to speak, the clerk will read your name or username, and you will have up to three minutes to speak. If you are a member of the, of an organization such as a city agency or nonprofit, you will have five minutes to speak. Please start your public comment by providing your name and city of residence. Should the planning commission be unable to hear all testimony this evening? We'll continue the public hearing tomorrow night, October 25th at 5:30 PM in the same location and online. The planning commission will not take any action this, this evening. We are here to listen to you. We will ask questions of staff, start deliberations and make recommendations beginning November 14th and continue to November 15th and 16th if needed. Our deliberations will be open to the public to listen in, but no testimony will be taken at that time. And what's important about that is tonight really counts. You'll have another opportunity to provide testimony during county councils, public hearings next year. You can check the council webpage for scheduling. Megan, have you got an idea right now? How many people have signed in to speak?
Yes, we have 30 people signed up.
We can add more if we need to. Um, another thought too, is if someone is saying something that you really agree with, hop up and say you agree too, if you want to get recorded saying that. Up to you. Megan, who's first?
We have Lorraine Pedersen, and that'll be followed by David Jones.
Okay, Lorraine, please. Yes.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Pedersen, and my husband and I have been living in Lake Stevens for 22 years. I'm speaking in support of urban tree canopy policies, and I'm against clear cutting. Clear cuts are not only unsightly, they are destructive. A clear cut turns a beautiful diverse area into a virtual desert, destroying habitat for all wildlife and birds for years. It is very well known and proven that trees help clean the air, prevent erosion, cool the earth, and provide food and habitat for animals and birds everywhere. Nothing on a tree is not used by nature. Trees and green belts also provide corridors for wildlife and birds so they can safely move about in their home territories or on migration. The loss of trees in our state is enormous. Of all those, all of us lose when huge swaths of trees are removed. And they are being removed at an alarming rate, so a few people can make a big profit. The profit makers are not concerned about impact on the environment or people who live near their clear cuts. I've seen trees being torn down by bulldozers. It is heartbreaking to see and hear what clear cutting is and the resulting destruction of visual blight take decades to recover. While it may be cheaper and easier in the short term to clear cut than to select specific trees for removal or preservation, it is far more costly in the long run in terms of environment and human worth. Clear cuts also increase the danger of slides, especially in areas already prone to them due to geologic construction. If anyone needs a reminder of how deadly a mudslide can be, take a drive east on Highway 530 to the Oso Memorial. Forty-three people lost their lives, 10 people were injured, and a whole community was wiped out due in part to clear cutting. The emotional toll on the friends and relatives of the people and pets who lost their lives cannot be underestimated. And the emotional toll on the people who searched through all the debris until they found every last person buried by the mudslide can only be imagined. This dangerous destructive unsightly practice should be outlawed. I ask you to recommend the urban tree canopy policy to the Snohomish County Council without weakening it.
Thank you so much for your testimony. David, I have an idea. I'd just like to ask you. We had a lot of comments on tree canopy, let me tell you. And I mean, a lot of them. Are there folks here who might want to get up and register your name and location in the county as a supporter of that comment? Would you like to be on record? If there's anyone that wants to come up and say so, do it. Otherwise, we're well aware of that position because we got a lot of comments on it, and that was a great testimony. Did you want to come up and speak? Go ahead. Uh-oh. Let me get it up closer to my mouth. Thanks for saying something. Oh my God, that's too long. I'll try it right about there. How's that? Okay, thank you. Does anybody else want to say something on tree canopy? Come on over.
Okay, thanks, David.
Well, good afternoon. I'm David Jones. I live in unincorporated Snohomish County and have for many, many decades. And I just want to thank the members of our planning commission. We have been blessed to live in a county that is well planned and thoughtfully planned. So thank you for your volunteerism, for your service to our community. I'm also here as a part of the leadership team of the Sierra Club Group. And that's over 3,000 members here in this county. We have read the urban tree canopy policy. We strongly, strongly recommend that you pass that on with your recommendation on to the city or on to our county council as well and ask them to adopt it as it's written. Want to speak to that very quickly there, because we, we do live in a county that has great planning already in place. This urban tree canopy policy aligns with much of the previous planning that has happened. David, you spoke to the fact that this is a massive effort that's going on, and it's a multi-year effort, and that's exactly right. But if we go back and look at the sustainable operations plan for the county, there are elements that are within there that talk about how do we as a county address things like our urban heat islands? The urban tree canopy policy is one of the ways that we will do that. So that it is a well-crafted plan. We appreciate the work that went into that. Or if you look at another policy, our climate action planning, which we had our climate action advisory team that worked on that as well. There are many elements that are within that as well that are addressed and will be, the goals in there will be met by adopting and implementing that urban tree canopy planning. But most importantly, I think for all of us who recognize the quality of life that we all appreciate here in Snohomish County, this county has, has continually, and especially in the last decade, said, we care greatly about racial and social equity. And if we think about the places within our county, in our county that are most impacted negatively by either clear cutting or heat islands or the inability to have access to green spaces, and instead you have hard spaces or areas where we're really not doing a good job of saying, we are developing and preserving the quality of life for all of the residents within our, our community and within our county. This urban tree canopy plan will address that as well. So thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for considering this. I understand you're getting lots and lots of comments on that. And I know that you'll do a good job, just as this, this group and other groups in the past have done a good job as well. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I clearly couldn't hear what you said, and I wasn't sure if you were asking us if we have, if we support the, um, the urban canopy plan. If we just wanted to say that, or did we want to tell?
First of all, if you're here and you support it and you want to get up and say so and get on the record that way, I think that's a great idea. It's not like there's a thousand people here. We got time and we'd like to hear you do that. Um, the other thing is if, if any of you, um, do support things that have already been talked about, just remember you don't need to say the same words twice. Just log in and say, I support it, something like that. So time is essential. I mean, it's a big thing. But we want, we want to hear from you. If you want to get up and log in, say, I, I'm here to support tree canopy. Come do it. And thank you for telling me. I need to get closer to the mic again. Do we have another person, Megan? Are you, or did you want to speak to the tree canopy? Come on up. If there's anybody else here wants to do that, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. You, you should, you should.
Basically, you could get in line, your name, your location, and, and tree canopy and sit down. We've got you on record that way. That does matter. So just line up, tree canopy, I support it. If you're against it, let us know that too. We're here to hear all sides. Okay? Yeah, just let's get a line going. Conga line. Why don't you come up and talk at the microphone for just a second?
Chair, Chair Larson, Chair Larson. Hold it, please.
We don't want to, we don't want to spin it out of control. We want to, we want to respect you guys.
Sir, could I have a go back to your seat, sir? The microphone? Just, I'm going to clear this up. So I think it's advisable, in the interest of being fair to everybody, that you continue to work through the list in the order that people signed up. That will be fair to everybody. And I see heads nodding around for the other commissioners.
Okay.
So everybody will have a chance to speak, speak this evening. So don't worry, there'll be plenty of time to speak, but I think out of fairness, we should just take, continue to take people in the order that you signed up. If you have not signed up and wish to speak, go out, out into the lobby and, and you can sign up on the sign up list.
What I don't want to, what I don't want to do is lose the people that are here and support the tree canopy. How we, how we capture that matters. And if we can't hear from you all, maybe after everybody's done, hang around and do it then, or you can see Megan, find your name on the list and write tree canopy behind your name so we can get you logged in. Because I, yeah, I appreciate the comment about holding order, respecting that order. Thank you for that. Who do we have to speak now?
My name is Jerry Moyer, and I want to give each one of you a copy. My name is Jerry Moyer. I live at 4930 156th Street Southeast, just east of Sunset on 156. My area is, uh, they're looking at that area for possible expansion. And what's happening is most of my neighbors, we all have acreage there. And of course, another thing that we have is we have the best schools in Snohomish County. They put new schools all over the place. And then most of the schools there are well-maintained, and we've got a possible third high school that's going in. So everybody is going to have the best of education in our area. And what we'd like to do is we're hoping that the county could expand the urban growth down 156. And with the developers that are coming around, they all want to, uh, buy in the area and they can help fix the road. Cause I understand that that road is going to be very expensive to put a new, widen out the road in that area. And so I'm thinking, well, if we work together as a team and that we can all have a win-win, we can have the best schools in the whole country, right in our own area. And everybody wants to move where the schools are good. And they're fairly new and they're well-maintained and our schools are. So I'm hoping that you will consider looking at this project a little bit closer and save the county some money as far as, uh, developing and opening up that road. They want to eventually put in a three lane, but they can't do it right now because they have other projects. But with most of our neighbors who want to leave, we all have land. And it'd be the perfect area for an expansion and to help the county build the road with the developers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Megan, who do we have next?
James Michelle Senior, and then following him will be Doug Turner. James Michelle Senior, and following him will be Doug Turner.
How do you all do? Good evening. I'm Dr. James Michelle. You got it. Thank you. Hello, I'm Dr. Jim Michelle Senior, and, uh, I live in Stanwood. Uh, the reason I'm here, of course, is, uh, I am, uh, one of the major people at Electric Mirror, which is a, uh, reasonably good-sized company and effort that makes, uh, we make mirrors. I go all over the world. Okay, what I want to bring up is the, uh, 15 acres that we have on 67 in Arlington. I presume that discussion is for tonight? Was that part of this evening? It was. Okay, got it straight. Okie doke. And, uh, the area we have is basically between 67 and the railroad track. Well, across railroad track, of course, we all know is a large area of, uh, that has been basically excavated. Uh, it's a very big area. It was a farm area. It is basically no longer a farm area. So basically, let's see. That's what's happened to the west of the railroad track. Well, that's remaining, uh, part that's being discussed is roughly, I believe, 184 acres within an acre or two. I'm not sure the exact number. And, uh, my thought is the thing, this is relatively small and, and pretty much of a nothing thing compared to what's already happening to the farmland already. It's already changed the character of the community. Uh, so, uh, what I'm trying to bring up is the fact that, that, that it has already changed. And, uh, the reason I'm interested in this area, we own this piece of property. We've had it for many years. And, uh, we would like to put a factory in here or an American manufacturer. There's not too many of such thing anymore. And, uh, we could contribute to jobs through roughly about 350 to the community. So long-term, I would like to see this property go commercial and I would like to develop it. And I, I bet there's other people around who are thinking the same way. So thank you for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Next, we have Doug Turner and then Alan Gibbs.
Need a mic stand here. Hello, good evening. My name is Doug Turner. I reside at 3201 South Lake Stevens Road in Lake Stevens, 98258. I have lived in my unincorporated R5 zone property for over 34 years. My home is almost 100 years old and sits on a little over two acres. Koho Salmon Bering Mosher Creek flows southerly for over 800 feet through the property. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Snohomish County Council, and in particular Dave Summers, for making good choices over these last 30-plus years regarding land use decisions. I'm very thankful for our state's urban growth area laws and how well they work to keep urban sprawl under control. I've seen firsthand the UGA laws in action right in our neighborhood in the early 90s and learned how important public participation is. Again, my heartfelt thanks to Snohomish County for keeping our little unincorporated, tight-knit neighborhood rural and zoned R5. Excuse me, I'm nervous. In all of the previous UGA county docket hearings that give small towns like Lake Stevens and Snohomish an opportunity to expand their UGAs. In our area, the Snohomish County Council has said no to any requests. They repeat thankfully and correctly that our small rural area acts as a natural buffer between Lake Stevens and Snohomish, and they want to keep it that way as long as possible. The two-mile stretch of South Lake Stevens Road, running from the new 24th Street at Costco to 20th Street Southeast is primarily a curvy, winding, shoulderless, countrylike road, being one of the oldest roads in the county. Once called Old Lake Stevens Highway, it winds through a lot of history of extended generations of families on large parcels, many of which support livestock and small farms. The UGA expansions, excuse me, that are being considered for Lake Stevens do not comply with the Growth Management Act, and they are not needed. I urge the county to adopt alternative number two. And to continue the good work you do going forward, and to please continue to keep my neighborhood rural and a natural buffer between our two local towns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Next, we have Alan Gibbs and then Ruth Brandall.
Uh, thank you. I'm Alan Gibbs. Uh, I'm conservation chair of the Pilchuck Audubon Society. Uh, we're celebrating our 50th anniversary here in Snohomish County. Thank you for the comprehensive plan update. Many Pilchuck Audubon members and other residents in our area have earlier urged you to adopt urban tree canopy policies as part of the 2024 comprehensive plan update. The following key points, some of which will now be familiar to you. First, protect our water quality. It seems inevitable climate changes will adversely affect the amount and quality of water so vital to this part of the Pacific Northwest. Retaining mature trees is the easiest and most effective way to ameliorate climate change by promoting carbon sequestration, cooling temperatures through shade and evaporation, as well as blocking drying winds and retaining water which reduce fire risk. Number two, clear cutting our forests for development under county jurisdiction has a long history in Snohomish County. Planting trees as a follow-up to clear cutting was once an acceptable process. Today, leaving more of the mature, uh, tree canopy uncut is highly desirable for the fish, for the wildlife, requiring a mature habitat to remain. What's true for the critters is good for us. We need urban trees. The 38% figure proposed for the urban tree canopy seems to us a reasonable goal. Snohomish County's current subdivision landscaping regulations are inadequate. Policies are necessary. Implementation is required for enforcement. So please change the word should to shall in Policies 9A3 and 9A4. Add language to Policy 9B1 to ensure an annual assessment of urban tree canopy using the best available technology. And please do this to prevent damages that occur because of permitting process mistakes and problems that occur after developments are built. The county must secure funding adequate for that program. In addition to the Washington Department of Natural Resources Evergreen Community Act, I suggest two resources to consult in how to conduct an urban tree canopy assessment. We recommend the following title search for canopy assessments, and I'll pass this along and provide in an email as well. The Urban Tree Canopy Assessment, A Community's Path to Understanding and Managing the Urban Forest. It was developed by the USDA Forest Service beginning in 2003. Through adaptive management, it is now a process utilized by hundreds of communities, counties, and other entities throughout the United States, as well as in Europe. The Arbor Day Foundation finds it to be a point of recommendation in its bulletin entitled Understanding Tree Canopy Assessments Number 84. So thank you for considering new options and new technologies. And if it's all right, I'll just hand this over to you now, and appreciate very much your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ruth Brandall and then Paul Brandall.
My name is Ruth Brandall, and I live in unincorporated Snohomish County with a Lake Stevens mailing address. Approximately 30 years ago, I served on the Lake Stevens Snohomish County Growth Management Coordinating Committee as a county representative and studied the area that is the West Lake Stevens Sunnyside Annexation Proposal extensively. I'd like to have entered into this record, the minority report from that Growth Management Coordinating Committee, the Growth Management Hearing Board decision that was, uh, an appeal that, of that UDA, UGA decision that the council made that actually pulled the UGA line back. And I think that was in the late 90s. I don't remember exactly what year. And then there was also the Sunnyside Pump Station feasibility study in the mid 1990s. Those three documents have a lot of detailed information as to why the Sunnyside area should not be annexed into the UGA. It lays between Highway 204 and Sunnyside Boulevard. On the west side of Sunnyside Boulevard is Agland. So that area is currently designated R5 and should remain so. It's pretty well fully developed, very little area in that area is left to be developed. Most of those homes have had city water provided, public water provided to them for many years, but there's no public sewer. Um, and the area uphill, it, it goes from, uh, development that was grandfathered in and, and got developed subsequent to the Growth Management Act named Valterra. And that, the sewer trunk line came right through the property down to this Lake Stevens sewer plant. And so that property got annexed in and had to tightline their stormwater all the way to the river. That has not been maintained well, and it's been a problem trying to get their community, who's responsible for maintaining that tight line, to do that. But the Sunnyside Pump Station recommends that any future development would need to be tightlined all the way to the river, which would require easements across the farmlands. And the way that this one has gone, not too many of the farmers down there are very, uh, amenable to that idea. The, uh, minority report and the Growth Management Hearing Board found that because of all of the critical areas on that hillside, that slope, landslide hazards, steep slopes, ravines, creeks, wildlife corridor habitat, that there really isn't that much developable land anyway. And keeping it R5 with more rural character adjacent to the Agland is a much more compatible use than bringing in six homes to the acre. than bringing in six homes to the acre right next to the...
That's time.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Paul Brandal and then Susan Davis.
I'm Paul Brandal. I'm in the West Lake Stevens area, along the Sunnyside Boulevard area between the 204 and the Silver Hill Road area. And so a lot of those impacts that my wife just spoke about are very true because we've been putting up with them for the last 30 years and have been involved in the Growth Management Act ever since the act was adopted in the state of Washington. So I just wanted to reiterate that I'm in favor of not going forward with expanding the UGA into the West Lake Stevens area, that the impacts of the critical areas that my wife just spoke about are serious impacts that impact the agricultural activities on the farm and only causes us to deal with all kinds of extra grief that we try to avoid over the last 30 years. So we've been very active in this process, as you can tell from my wife's testimony. So, and also, of course, with the extra traffic that we get, which we have no control over, makes it very difficult to be on the farm roads and to be able to drive across the farm road from our house up on the high side road and go across to the floodplain area. And I have to go perpendicular to all the traffic when it's time to cross over and feed livestock or do any kind of work with the tractor and all that. So I'm careful every day. I wear yellow jackets and have my lights on, but sometimes that's not always good enough. We have a lot of people who just want to get to work and want to be where they want to be, not where they're driving necessarily. But I know what we can do about that. I just don't need a wide road to have to cross just to get traffic through the area. So, but that's what I just opposed, the increase of the urban growth boundary. That does not have any benefit to us except to deal with more of the urban pressures that we deal with from over the last three decades or more that we've lived there. So thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thanks, Mr. Turner.
Next, we have Susan Davis and then Lonnie Davis.
Good evening. My name is Susan Davis, and I live in Monroe. I'm here to speak in support of the MON2 docket proposal. This property has been in my family for more than 80 years. My husband and I own it today with two of my brothers. In the old days, this area was rural in character. We had gardens, horses, chickens, dogs, cats, and all of us kids were able to run around and play. Over the last 80 years, the area has changed dramatically, and in particular, the last 10. Our once rural neighborhood is now urban-level developments, and the urban growth boundary line of 1995 makes very little sense today. Our property is currently zoned R5. We have one habitable house on 22 acres. We can only build three more homes on these 22 acres. We considered building another home here for our family, but looking around us today, that makes very little sense. As a real estate agent serving in the Monroe community for 28 years, I believe that the highest and best use of this property is to bring it into the city and allow it to be developed. The DEIS says this site can accommodate 179 people, so that means it could accommodate maybe 70 homes instead of just four. That sounds much better, like a much better, more efficient use of land. More of the city zoning were to allow mixed housing types. As a bonus, there's no risk of displacement or neighborhood gentrification. PSRC emphasizes efficient land use. And for the following seven reasons, we believe this property meets that definition. This property is in the path of development. We already share a 60% common boundary line with the City of Monroe on three sides. Ironically, there's a "Welcome to Monroe" sign right beside our driveway. All public utilities and services are available on this site. The property is already served by roads that are all within the City of Monroe's jurisdiction. No new roads would need to be developed to serve the MON2 site. Bringing this property into the city would resolve the issue where the city and county have a split jurisdiction over 197th Avenue Southeast, which is the road on the east side of our property, where half of the road is in the city and the other half is an easement over our property, which is in the county. Moving the UGA boundary to Chain Lake Road would create a more logical UGA boundary line than where it is today. It would create a more natural and logical separation between urban development on the west side of Chain Lake Road compared to the more rural areas on the east side of Chain Lake Road. This property could then be developed in a manner that's more consistent in character with the surrounding development. Allowing this property to be annexed in the City of Monroe also creates an opportunity to enhance the City of Monroe parks, trails, and green space.
10 seconds.
Monroe Parks Department currently mows the utility corridor that runs through the east-west of this property since our water line runs through it. And instead of just maintaining this corridor where we are the only beneficiaries, it could be a great opportunity to extend the Chain Lake Trail east through the property to meet the North Hill Park on the other side.
That's time.
Thank you. We provided our written comments as well last night, so hopefully you'll take a moment to look at that. Please support Monroe, too.
Susan Davis.
Next, we have Lonnie Davis and then Joan Smith.
Yes, I'm next. Lonnie Davis, Monroe. I'm here to speak in support of the MON2 UGA expansion in Monroe. First, I want to talk about some of the challenges we face as a property owner in an R5 zone in the middle of urban development. With the arrival of 27 new homes on our south property line, we had to spend over $12,000 to cut down dangerous trees after tree limbs fell on their new fences. These same neighbors called the fire department five times during the spring and early summer as I safely burned debris piles with permits. I'm a 26-year veteran firefighter. I tried to be a good neighbor by giving notice to the homeowners association members when I was burning and using equipment near our shared property line. We've kindly taken calls from neighbors who were concerned about a dog running loose on our 22-acre property. They said it stuck its nose under one of the fences and was sniffing. Who knows how many more complaints we would get if we put more animals on this property? We've shooed off neighbors who want to walk through the utility corridor that runs through our property. One neighbor with his young daughter attempted to walk through as I was falling a tree. And as Councilman Sam Low recalls, "We spoke in favor of enacting the no-shooting zone in this area after a neighbor shot a gun from the east side of Chain Lake Road, sending a bullet through our property, which struck one of the main view homes on July 4th of 2020. The same thing occurred on New Year's Eve 2018 when a stray bullet from the same direction was shot into our house. I have no animosity toward any of the people in these homes. They are good people, and we realize that their perspective is different than ours, urban versus rural. Our land can support four homes in the county or 70 homes in the city. More if city zoning were to allow a mix of housing types where single-family, duplex, and higher-density development can coexist in a planned community. This sounds like a much more efficient use of the land." The challenges we face today are these. 80% of people with mortgages have rates under 5%. They have fixed their largest expense and are hesitant to sell their homes and remortgage at a higher rate. New housing stock will be critical to fill the demand that the previous 20 years of underbuilding has created. Larger developers have economies of scale that smaller infill builders don't, and they are able to offer incentives such as rate buydowns to get people into homes. Infill housing and ADUs have their place, but expanding the UGA in areas where it makes sense, like the MON2 site, will allow larger developments to make a bigger difference in bringing housing to the market more quickly and affordably, and there is no risk of displacement. The MON2 site has everything already there: roads, utilities, urban-level development on all sides, and 60% of our boundary lines are contiguous with the City of Monroe. We ask that you recommend approval of the MON2 UGA expansion proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Next, we have Joan Smith and then Nadine Shanty.
Joan Smith, 14106 64th Avenue West, Edmunds, Unincorporated County. Since 2006, I have stood here and before the county council to testify on behalf of the silent citizens of our county. Those voiceless cedars, hemlocks, and firs have gifted us with a healthy place to live: clean air, water, wind protection, stable slopes, and most importantly, inspiring our lives with their beauty. In 2007, I addressed the reality of climate change and the important carbon sequestration mitigation that our trees provided. Our trees play an enormous role in cooling rising heat. I'm excited to see that the Snohomish County Planning Department's proposals in the Comprehensive Plan for 2024 now use language that addresses climate change and puts forth an urban tree protection policy. That can make a huge difference. Without such a policy, the loss of canopy throughout our county has been extensive. An example, and one painful to me, is what occurred on Picnic Point Road. This policy might have saved many of 100-year-plus protective evergreen trees clear-cut there. Rather, we have 112 "affordable", low-impact development homes on 12 acres with fewer non-native replacement trees. Picture each of those homes at $1.2 million. The neighborhood suffers increased traffic congestion and the Puget Sound tainted runoff. We citizens need the healthy resilience that retained and added tree canopy provides. Education can promote the significance of our trees. We need to do our part to mitigate climate change. Some areas are less suited to nurturing trees. Not so here. We can do it, and do it within our current urban growth area. Please add the urban tree canopy and policy. Support it to the Comprehensive Plan for 2024. Find ways to enforce it and expand its elements. Do not weaken it. Thank you for your volunteer time, and thank you to the trees that continue to volunteer on behalf of all of us. Continue. Thank you.
Next, we have Nadine Shanty and then Reed Shockey.
Good evening. My name is Nadine Shanty, and I am a resident of unincorporated Snohomish County, really the Clearview community. I'm going to invite you all to take a little short journey through time with me, if you would. When I was growing up in New Orleans in the late 50s and through the 70s, there was a lot of information in journals and in the news stating that clearcutting the rainforests in South America was going to have a devastating impact on our planet. What affected me most was a comment that I heard from my biology teacher. She used a simple metaphor that painted a clear picture of what we were doing by continuing the massive deforestation. She told us that Earth is a living organism and that all trees are a part of the system that allows our planet to breathe, much like the lungs in a human body. Now, this made perfect sense to me as a teenager, as a young adult, and I was sure that we would stop deforesting the planet, and I couldn't have been more wrong. I still can't believe that we continue the process. As a species, humans have intelligence and are self-aware, yet somehow we seem to be unable or unwilling to learn from our mistakes in this area. So here we are now, and science has proven to be correct, yet we still argue over whether there truly is climate change. I am now 70 years old. I know I look good. You have to have a little humor. And it is well past time to act. As an individual, I own an electric car. I partner with Ridwell to reduce my carbon footprint responsibly, and I monitor my water usage in my home. But this issue, this environmental concern, requires a community-wide response. We have to make protecting our forests and planting more trees absolutely necessary parts of development in Snohomish County. We protect our forests, we protect the planet, and we protect future generations. Honestly, I'm here because I don't want someone who is 20 right now to have to stand here in 50 years and ask why we were asleep at the wheel for such a long time. Please act now, and thank you for listening to us this evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have Reed Shockey and then Mayor Rankin.
Thank you very much, members of the commission. And city of residents, I live in Everett, but I'm currently representing the town of Darrington as their town planner. And specifically, you'll see on your list that there's a docketing request on file DR1, and it's also known as an urban swap. And the purpose of DR1 is to take all of the UGA in Darrington plus some areas around it in rural Snohomish County and get it arranged in a manner that's suitable for growth, takes care of some issues that the town has been discussing with PDS staff for some time, so it's all properly aligned. So that's, and the mayor will be here in just a second to comment briefly on that. The, I'd like to thank, I noticed Frank Slusser isn't in the room today, I don't think. Oh, is he over here? Oh, anyway, Frank's done a great job, and thank you very much in reviewing DR1 and coming up with the staff report. And it's very thorough, very complete, and very well-aligned with the thinking of the town. The one comment that I would like to make with regard to that, the staff recommendation currently is proposed as a denial. But then the staff goes to some length to explain that it's denial because of certain inconsistencies. And if those inconsistencies are resolved, I think what I read in the staff report is that that docketing request is acceptable to the PDS staff. So my only request is that if we can turn that from a denial with parenthetical comments about consistencies and instead turn it into a recommendation for approval provided that we abide by the recommendations of the staff as far as tweaks or changes, then we would much prefer that. Let me close by emphasizing we have no objection at all to the comments made by staff and fully expect that when we update the Comprehensive Plan, we will be in total alignment with the suggestions that were made. So that concludes my comments, and I believe the mayor is going to step forward and make some brief comments. There he is.
Mayor Rankin and then Lynn Lichtenberg.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Dan Rankin, Town of Darrington. Closer to my mouth is better.
It's a coaching group.
Problem. I don't have a lot to add to Reed's testimony tonight. I would like to say that this has kind of been a long road for the Town of Darrington. We set forth a number of years ago to bring this docket request forward. We've been working with Steve Scorni, who's since retired between COVID and other obligations on both ends of this. We never did rectify those inconsistencies. I am fully confident that those inconsistencies could be or will be rectified before this goes forward. Thank you.
Lynn Lichtenberg and then Sally Jo Sebring.
Hello, my name is Lynn Lichtenberg. I live in Everett. I have lived by the shores of the Puget Sound in the Salish Sea since 1961 and in Everett, Snohomish County for several decades. I have lived through the relentless logging and destruction of our immense temperate rainforest in the state and the resulting decline of fish, birds, insects, and other wildlife populations. It hurts my heart to see our remaining forests and even small pockets of trees mowed down. We have a climate crisis, we have a biodiversity crisis, and protecting our remaining tree canopy is essential to addressing both. My kids grew up climbing trees and playing in the wild edges of our yard and of nearby parks. They and their friends still talk about those times with a twinkle in their eyes. They want their kids to have those same opportunities. The kids of the future need wild pockets of trees to explore, to find the bugs, and to dig in the fragrant dirt. Adults need trees and forests to escape the hubbub of modern life. I walk almost daily in my neighborhood, and now in the fall, I walk in the streets with mature deciduous trees to enjoy the glorious colors of the changing leaves. And in the winter... And in the winter, the evergreens are beautiful. In the summer, especially in the warm and hot weather, I seek out the streets with large trees of all kinds. Those streets are noticeably cooler. If you've tried it noticeably cooler, please note that and the air smells much fresher. Perhaps in the 80s and 90s, our leaders could be forgiven for not realizing the looming forces of destruction, but we are living with them now. We must step up our efforts. Good intentions are no longer enough. We need a well thought out plan to protect and enhance our forests and urban trees. And the urban tree canopy policy is such a plan. It is well thought out. It will help. Please do not weaken it. I ask you to recommend it to the Snohomish County Council and thank you for your work and your attention.
Sally Jo Sebring and then Sally Rosamond.
Sally Jo Sebring and I live in the city of Lake Stevens. I'm living on the property that I grew up on, which was, let's just say about six decades ago that I was, yeah, when I was first there. I'm speaking specifically to proposals for urban growth expansion for the city of Lake Stevens. There is kind of a weird, you guys probably noticed that it's this weird combination of ones in the final docket, which is LS2. It's a little over three acres property with Little Pilcheck Creek going through the middle of it, which is a salmonoid creek. So it doesn't make any sense. And the PDS has recommended that you reject that proposal and I would ask you to, to also reject it. The potential jobs from the environmental impact statement is potentially six jobs. And it, yeah, that just doesn't make sense. The other one is motion 22095, which is about 300, a little over 300 acres. The impact statement stated that maybe a population of 759 and 15 jobs. If you're, if you're not familiar with Lake Stevens, we are not having any problem hitting our population targets. So we are having troubles hitting our employment targets, bringing more property into the city that is going to be residential and without any jobs just means more people going elsewhere for jobs and more inability, more traffic. It's just not what we need in Lake Stevens. We don't need more residential outs, you know, growing residential areas with no jobs. You know, if anyhow, thank you very much. So I would ask you to reject that one too. Those are both part of alternative three. So I would ask you to reject any of those expansions of Lake Stevens urban growth area. Thank you.
Sally Rosamond and then Laura Arthur.
Hello, my name is Sally Rosamond and I live on 61st Avenue in the Clearview area. And thank you for hearing us and thank you for speaking, everyone. It's good to know what other people are experiencing. I've lived in Clearview for 35 years. My husband's lived there for darn near 50 and I wanted to talk about something that we're doing. We live in a forest that's five acres and we don't have any lawn. We live under the trees. And one of the things we've been doing is parallel measuring the rainwater for 15 years. And so the average rainfall, annual rainfall in the clear space is 44.07 inches annually. That's average over 15 years and over, over in the area that's inside the canopy, the same measurement is, you may want to guess, 21, yeah, 21.59. I'm sorry, but that's it. It's plus or minus 5% error rate. We also calibrate the measurements to an electronic measuring system and also take a look at what the weather service reports. I wanted you to know that because it's really important because we have a water issue in the world now and we have a water issue in Snohomish and we're going to probably be getting a bigger one. Trees are our biggest filter. They're also what slows the rain down so we don't have to pay for road repair and we also need the water. So I wanted to bring that out. We do have the data. I can share where the data set is and everything. If you need that information, please let me know. And again, thank you very much. The other thing I was, forgot I was going to tell you, it's 10 degrees cooler when I go home. I have a car, you know, temperature gauge and I always check it out and it's 102 this summer, right? 102, y'all remember that? 102. I got home, it was 92. Think about that.
Hi, I don't, can you hear me? There we go. I just wanted people to know kind of what's going on with the rezoning and stuff like that. I'm in an area and I don't live out in the sticks either. The sewer company is coming down our street and they're going to, they estimated it at $80,000 to $100,000 per lot to put a sewer in. And they want us to pay to develop the property for future homes. You know, in other words, they want us gone and our pockets empty. And I just think this is totally unfair. There's a lot of us that just can't afford to go out and get a hundred, $150,000 loan because that isn't even hooking up to your house. That's, you know, that's just them doing the design, just their part down the street. Sorry, I'm nervous. And so I'm definitely been very upset about this and a lot of my neighbors have been too because of the price of it is, the sewer company, why are we paying for the development so they can have more customers for now until the cows come home? They should share in this cost. I can see, you know, paying some, but 80 to $100,000 estimate is, is just very scary. I know this doesn't have anything to do about the trees. We do have trees there too, they'll cut down. Thank you.
Mr. Arthur, what's your location? What's your location?
I'm over by Silver Lake and the lots are only about 100 feet long. Like I said, I don't live out in the sticks. This isn't somewhere where they got to go a long ways, you know, to hook up the water in the sewer. 80 to 100,000 estimate and they just sent me a paperwork saying that they're going to have a meeting and they're going to tell us what the estimate is and then they're going to put it on public record. Is that a lean now against my home for that? I don't know.
Martha Clatterbaugh and then Cheryl Perhatch.
I'm Martha Clatterbaugh. I live in unincorporated Snohomish County. My mailing address is Bothell. I'm very close to Bothell. I want to say I'm a fan of urban planning, the comprehensive plan and designated urban growth areas. One of the best things about being, living here is the ability to get away from urban areas and get out where it's a little wilder. And any of that ability is urban sprawl. I've seen a lot of that in the last 20 or 30 years. But the purpose of urban growth areas is to concentrate the people and the services. And I appreciate what Snohomish County tries to do in that area. Unfortunately, there seems to be a regular effort to undermine those services and encouraging expanding the urban growth areas and that's urban sprawl. So I'd just like to urge you to stick with the Growth Management Act and urban growth areas that have already been established. And I believe that means adopting alternative two, but without the urban growth expansions. And I'd also like to speak briefly in favor of the urban tree canopy policy. I've been a WSU Snohomish County Master Gardener for 25 years and incidentally, the program is celebrating 50 years this year. During that time, I've heard and read a lot of studies about the benefits of trees and you, you know, all of that stuff already. But I've watched the changes in my own neighborhood where 20 acre parcels, one after the other, changes from wooded areas to houses stacked side by side with no trees whatsoever. Yes, there are saplings that the developers put in, but, but they have none of the benefits of the old trees that were taken down. So I fully support the position expressed by the Pilchuck Audubon Society that we heard earlier. And I urge you to adopt, ask the council to adopt, the urban tree canopy policies to save the large trees in developing areas and maintain a healthy green environment for Snohomish County. And thank you very much.
Cheryl Perhatch and Kate Lunsford.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Perhatch and I live on Cascadian Way in South Everett. And the property next to me was just rezoned and they're going to put two townhouses and duplex next to me. And I'm concerned about the, the trees that we have at the back of the property. There's a creek that runs on two sides of my property and we have bear and deer and stuff that come through there all the time, coyotes. I would like to make sure that, that that is saved, that it's not going to be destroyed. I mean, already we're encroaching on, I've been there over 55 years. Already we're encroaching on their, you know, their land and the more and more that gets built and grown in there, we're just going to drive them out. Also, we don't have sewers in our area. They stop before they get, we live in a dip. We don't have sewers in our area that come as far as I am. And the people across the street, they're also on septic and they've built up 140th and I'm not sure what the next street is. But in the winter, when it rains, they haven't planned for the runoff and the people across the street, their property floods because all the water comes down through the ditch and because we're in the lowland, it, it floods their property. The counties come out a couple of times and, and tried to fix it, but now all the rocks that were in the ditch up above are now filled the ditch in front of their house. I'm also concerned about the traffic. We have more families moving in with small children and the traffic is horrendous on there. The speed limit is only 30 and if you go 30 miles an hour on Cascadian Way, you're going to get passed. People drive 50, 60 miles an hour on there. The road is not wide enough to support. I mean, I don't know if they can put more lanes in or what they can do, but there's not enough room for all the people that are moving in. And if you're going to start, I'm told I can tear down my garage and build two townhouses on it. I don't know where that traffic's going to go. Already we have a hard time getting from Cascadian Way out to 128. Sometimes it's easier to go to 160.
10 seconds.
And try to get out. So thank you for listening.
Kate Lunsford, then Carol McMayor.
Hello, I am Kate Lunsford and I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County. And we urge the Planning Commission to recommend the urban tree canopy policy to the Snohomish County Council without amendments that would weaken it. You've heard story after story here and the league supports all of these stories you've heard about the urban tree canopy policy from the Sierra Club, from the Pilchuck Audubon Society and from others here tonight. So I, I just wanted to add a couple of notes about money because trees save us money and the, they increase property values as home buyers and businesses look for green spaces and, and proximity to nature. The urban wildlife habitat attracts tourism and recreational opportunities, boosting local economies. Well-designed urban habitats are great flood control, have great, are great flood control mechanisms, reducing infrastructure damage and the associated costs. These spaces provide cool shady places that lower energy use and those expenses. The economic benefits of urban wildlife habitats extend well beyond the initial investment, offering long-term advantages to the county and to all of us. I appreciate the commission's diligence about all of the issues before you. I'm going to send you an email of my comments with a list of resources and scientific studies about the benefits of urban tree canopy. Thank you very much.
Carol McMayor and then Kathy Ferlacci.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Carol McMahon and I rise as a longtime resident of Lynwood, deeply concerned about our community's mental health and wellbeing and for the relationship to our tree canopy, which is undeniable. Today, I urge you to consider the profound impact of urban tree canopy on our mental health and to support policies that prioritize our shared mental wellness, something all county and city councils are concerned with today. As I walk through those urban neighborhoods with trees, who happen to be fortunate to have trees this fall, I am in awe of the wildlife and the beauty. They create an atmosphere of calm and safety reminiscent of my rural childhood. These experiences are not merely nostalgic, they are vital for mental health. Research consistently shows that urban tree canopy significantly enhances our wellbeing. Trees aren't just aesthetically pleasing, they are our allies in the battle against stress. Studies prove that exposure to nature, especially in urban areas, reduces stress levels, promoting relaxation and lowering cortisol. Moreover, trees foster happier communities. Residents in green spaces report higher life satisfaction. Trees improve concentration and cognitive function, providing a restorative environment that aids mental clarity and coping with everyday demands. People become more productive and are more contributive to their communities. But our approach must be inclusive and just. Environmental justice demands equal access. We must ensure all communities, regardless of socioeconomic status, have the opportunity to benefit from urban tree canopy. This inclusivity mitigates mental health disparities among different socioeconomic groups. We must adopt climate change policies proposed by our county executive. These policies align with preserving our green spaces, combating air pollution and fostering mental wellbeing. Furthermore, I implore you to support land use alternative two without urban growth area expansion. It's a step toward maintaining our existing green havens, nurturing social interactions and bolstering community cohesion. Rejecting the urban growth area expansion proposal is pivotal. Rural growth too must be controlled. 4.5% is the limit we must adhere to and not go beyond. In conclusion, our mental health is intertwined with the trees that grace our communities. Preserving them isn't just an environmental choice, it's a choice for our collective mental wellness. So let's act wisely, sustainably and equitably. I urge you to adopt the climate change policies of the county executive, support land use alternative two, reject urban growth area expansion and limit rural growth to 4.5%. Thank you for your attention.
Kathy Ferlichay and then Bruce Barnbum.
Yeah, I'm Kathy Ferbache and I live in Bothell on the edge of Snohomish County. And I have to say, this has been like a course. Everybody has their personal take on information that I'm familiar with, I'm aware of, but the personalizing of it has been really very beneficial. I've loved hearing what people have had to say. And everything that I wanted to say, I was encouraged to speak from my heart. And so I'm not going to say anything about what I have written on the paper. I just want to say that it is, living through this time, there are so many destructive systems in place that have been in place for hundreds of years and it's impossible to think of us unwrapping. We've just taken advantage of the land, the natural environment, the species. We've just taken advantage of the land, the natural environment, the species that occupy that land, and it's just crushing to think about unwinding that. But this is something we can do with the tree canopy in our urban areas. I mean, that's doable. It's not gonna be easy. We have a lot of challenges with people needing housing, but it's something we can, you know, noodle through this and figure it out. So I'm totally in support of your recommending the urban tree canopy policy to Snohomish County Council, and don't weaken a thing about it. And add a boy to everything else that's been said here tonight. Thank you. Add a girl.
Bruce Barnbaum, and then Rita Ireland.
Bruce Barnbaum, I live on the Mountain Loop Highway 31417. Everyone in this room has heard the phrase, "Trees are the lungs of the earth." It's absolutely true, because trees provide the oxygen required of all animals. As we remove trees through constantly expanding development, we are cutting into our needed lungs. Snohomish County is but a small portion of the earth, but we can be a leader in growing trees, not destroying them. One place to start is with a robust tree planting and tree growing effort in our urban areas. But that's just a small start. We have to end the continued development into natural woodland areas. Unfortunately, politicians are continually looking for new development to increase the tax base, which requires increased infrastructure, which requires increasing the tax base, and so on. Let's get real about the consequences of increased development. Let's also get real about two other critical things. Number one, during the hot, dry summer months, a burn ban is instituted, but there is no ban on home fireworks, which can be equally devastating. A wildfire, a forest fire, can destroy more large trees in a day than can be planted in a decade. And those planted trees are small saplings. They're not the big trees that are burned in a forest fire. We need a total ban on home fireworks. Municipal displays in safe places must take their place. Number two, Snohomish County can lead the way to changing our state constitution that mandates funds from logging on DNR land to be used for education. Our constitution pits the environment against education, two of the most important aspects of a good life. Funding for education must be derived elsewhere, not from cutting down forests, and there must be no clear cutting. It's time to update our state constitution, and Snohomish County can lead the way by leaders with vision. Do we have such leaders here?
I have just one copy. Can you make more for each of you?
Rita Ireland, then Ryan Hurley.
This will be short. My name is Rita Ireland. I'm living in Edmonds, Washington since the seventies, and I am here to tell you, after I heard a lot of wonderful compassionate and concepts that I also would agree with, that I'm going to tell you that I support the urban tree policy and wanna honor Joan Smith, and Kate Lunsford, and Carol McMahon, and Lynn Lichtenberg for your great ideas that I, I, I send my hurrahs to them. I'm also a farm girl from Iowa, Carol, so I guess it's the soil and the trees and my family's concept that you take care of your soil and your grounds and your earth for many years and many decades and not worry about the crop yield of that next year. And that's what we have to be thinking about too. So, thank you.
Ryan Hurley, then Don Dillinger.
Yeah, hi, Ryan Hurley. I live in Bothell, well, unincorporated Snohomish County. So I wanna talk about, well, first I wanna say thank you. This has gotta be an arduous task, right? Yeah. So, one of the things I appreciate about the comprehensive plan update is the focus on trying to fill density in around high-capacity transit to deal with the fact that, let's face it, traffic's a wreck in the entire region. With that, there is one part of both Alternatives Two and Three that I sit there and scratch my head about, and that's the 300 acres right out on the edge of the current urban, current urban growth area that would be brought in under, uh, I believe it's Council Motion 2290 and/or 22134, and zoned, um, LDMR. So if I remember correctly, it's, that would allow somewhere between 2,000 and 6,000 new people right on the edge of the current urban growth area, but nowhere near high-capacity transit. And that the nearest transit's about two miles away on State Route 527. And as of now, there are no bus lines that come up Maltby Road or go down 35th. And while there are plans to potentially add those in that area, that still winds up being up to a mile away from where we're talking about the entire collection of new townhomes. So I am confused why we would go ahead and put two to 6,000 new residents beyond the reach of transit in a plan whose primary goal is to densify around high-capacity transit. Seems at odds. And I understand that some of that is to go ahead and get enough space or enough new growth into the Bothell Muga, but it also looks like kind of a little Chicago gerrymandered extension up at the top of that, as opposed to something that's contiguous with it next to it. That's pretty much what I had. Oh, a small thing I forgot to put in written feedback on page 3184 of the draft of our legislative statement, wrong intersection in the caption. It's not Maltby and nine, it's 180th and nine that's in the picture. Thanks.
Don Dillinger, then Clay White.
Thank you, I am Don Dillinger. I live in Snohomish, and, um, I just wanna add my voice to the many who have supported your work, uh, which has, uh, really been excellent, and, and, um, this particular urban canopy plan is a perfect, uh, solution and a, and a, you know, testimonial to your efforts here. I, um, you know, I've just been spending a lot of time flying around the country and looking out of the plane, uh, in, flying into different towns where you see the territory plastered with these developments that have no allowance for any greenery. Um, you know, and we have, uh, history here in some areas of, of massive development and large apartment areas where, uh, there is no visible green space anywhere near. For all these children to grow up, um, to have no access to the, the woods that, that I had access to when I was a kid, uh, I really, um, I'm grateful for your efforts to combat this, uh, and, uh, you know, limitless growth are, the idea that we can grow our way out of our problems is, is a delusion. And, uh, you know, you're doing a good job, and I, I certainly, uh, agree with the Sierra Club and Audubon Society's opinion on this, uh, urban growth policy. Uh, the canopy is a fantastic thing to bequeath our, our children and grandchildren. Uh, so way to go. Thank you very much for your, uh, uh, volunteerism.
Clay White, then Mark Hurston.
Great, thank you so much. For the record, my name is, uh, Clay White. It's great to be here tonight. First, just thank you to the PDS team. I know how much work this is, and, uh, you're doing a great job, and thank you for your, uh, volunteerism. I know that it doesn't pay well, but it's a great service, and you're really helping shape the county as it grows over the next 20 years. I just wanna briefly touch on two, uh, docket applications in support of Malt One in the Maltby area and a portion of Council Motion 22098. Uh, so, um, a little bit about Malt One. Uh, John and Amy Vangemer founded JV Recycling in 1996. They were really working on climate issues before we started talking about it, our comprehensive plans. Uh, their operation, their current operation in, in Maltby crushes asphalt and concrete from road projects or light rail that's, that's coming up north. They recycle it, and then it goes back out and is used for projects. It was really needed back then, it's, it's more needed now. All of the development that the county is looking at is all supposed to be redevelopment or urbanizing. So there's this demand for concrete and asphalt recycling, but there isn't enough places for PPL to take materials. So if Sound Transit or Snohomish County is, is making road improvements, if they don't have a location that's close to where they can take materials, it goes to the, it goes to the landfill. That's historically where asphalt and concrete goes. Um, this request allows them to expand, uh, their current operation so that they can take in more materials, uh, as the county continues to grow. Uh, and so, because what happens is material comes in, it gets crushed, and you have to wait for the new, the next user that's gonna use it for that next project. And the way I like to think about it is, cause I know UGA issues are an important topic, is sometimes plans sound really good, sometimes they work really well. And, you know, I really have focused as a planner for the last 25 years on plans that work really well. If you're gonna focus on urbanizing, if you're gonna focus on urban development, if you're gonna focus on, um, the equity and climate resiliency objectives to reduce vulnerable vulnerabilities, the impacts of climate change, reduce greenhouse gases, and reduce exposure to pollution, you have to have the services available to actually make it happen, or it's just words on a piece of paper. Uh, and Malt One does that. Shifting a little bit to Motion 22098, this includes the same Malt One property, but also includes the North Shore School District property, and I wanna talk about that. The current zoning for the North Shore School District property is R5. You can build schools in the R5 zone. Schools will be built on that property regardless of you bringing in the urban growth area or not. The difference is, schools built in a, in a rural area are built to rural standards.
10 seconds.
On a septic system. So bringing that to the urban growth area will ensure it's built to urban standards, road improvements, put on public sewer. And so keep that in mind, the uses that are allowed in that, in the existing zoning versus that urban growth area expansion area. Thank you very much for all your time.
Mark Hurston, then Julie Langabear.
Hi, I'm Mark Hurston, Bothell, in the unincorporated area. I noticed that the card sent to the House spoke of adverse impacts, and the high density that's slated in the next update, it appears to use the word comprehensive, but yet then it doesn't seem to bring into law with the council the need for comprehensive services, say, police, fire, the roads themselves. And I'd like to find a way that somehow, in this process, the laws could go and link to the services that are required. Right now, when you're traveling 524 between Ninth Avenue Southeast and Bothell, it's fairly close to Thrasher's Corner, and 24th Avenue West in Linwood, you have to go through an ancient county road. And a lot of people will say, well, no, that's not Snohomish County's deal. Now that that's a state route, that's just Washdott. Go talk to Washdott. But I believe that there should be linkages within the plan which take those types of things into account and strengthen the roads and overall improving traffic some in that process. I'd really like it to bring significantly more police officers into the Southwest UGA. I'd like to have that be fully funded, and I'd like to ask for fire and life safety to also be increased and be more fully funded, so that all of that high-intensity development, um, is somehow going to be served. I'm not saying we'll make it all the way, and I recognize budget restriction, but one of the things, real quick on budget restriction, is I was told once, when the developer develops that area in that high-density way, they often are paying into a pool, but the pool doesn't necessarily then come back to the area that was then developed. So maybe there's a fairness issue there, there's something, but please consider that when the high-intensity development near 164th North Road, Linwood High School, in that Southwest area are getting so dense, and the card mentioned now that they wanna do small homes in certain people's lots, that'll only increase density on old roads. Have a lot of concern about that. So please, keep as much of the Southwest UGA in the urban low-density residential rating, and I guess then codes. It looks as though we should try and wait to develop in that density until we have brought the arterials and state routes. Thank you. Until we have brought the arterials and state routes up to the design standard that you're planning for. Let's not do it backwards and say, "We don't have the budget." Thanks for your time. Appreciate you all.
Julie Langabear, then Nick Goins.
Uh, my name is Julie Langabear. I live in Everett. Uh, I'm adding my voice to urge you to recommend that the urban tree canopy policy be adopted without weakening amendments. Uh, my number one reason is that unlike newly planted trees, uh, mature trees are sequestering carbon right now. In order for our children and grandchildren to have a chance to live on a habitable earth, it is our responsibility to do everything we can to slow climate change. I believe that with use of some creativity, developers can retain many existing trees and build housing. A neighborhood with abundant trees is a happier and healthier place to live. Thank you.
Nick Goins, then Lisa Uda.
I got a pretty loud voice, so I'll just be blunt. Um, my little postage stamp, uh, on 31st Drive on 116th Place, I, um, wanna support all this about the canopy. I didn't have a chance to read it all, but on my postage stamp, I've got, uh, 1,420 footers that I care for and have been for 30 years. So with that, that's not what I came to even talk about, but it was just, you know, self, uh, worthy of mention. What I am concerned about is 116th Street and the changes in the, uh, high-density housing, uh, uh, both from 35th Avenue all the way to the lake. Okay? So, uh, I volunteer my own time to clean 116th Street. So I walk up and down, and I know how dangerous it is already with the traffic that's there. All the short cutters coming out of Boeing and taking 116th Street down to Lowllarmar Road and trying to get to Snohomish, it's dangerous. Uh, my, just trying to get out of my, uh, my little neighborhood on 31st, uh, 35th, I can count 36, 38 cars at a time, and I can't get out just to get out of my neighborhood. So with your, uh, introduction of increased, uh, high-density in just those simple areas, um, without the infrastructure, without, um, widening and adding sidewalks and everything else, uh, you're creating a situation that is, um, you know, it's detrimental to all the people who are trying to access the lake. Um, I, uh, as a last comment, I would, uh, dare you to walk from 35th to the lake any day of the week. Okay? If, to get my point across, increasing any more people trying to live on 116th Street is, uh, you're asking for a lot of trouble, cause they're gonna have problems getting out on the street. You're gonna get anticipation and desperation to get out there in traffic. You know, the, I think history speaks loudly for itself, but, uh, please, please reconsider, um, that whole idea of re, uh, rezoning that, um, until at least infrastructure, you know, there's gotta be something that, uh, can be done about that or somewhere else that can be rezoned. Thank you.
Lisa Uda, then Carla Utter.
Hi, my name is Lisa Utter. I live in Linwood, and thank you for your time. Um, I'm here to speak in favor of a very strong urban tree canopy, um, ordinance and in your ordinance and in your recommendation for it. Thank you.
Carla Utter, then Joan Thomas.
I'm from Edmonds and I'm here to be speak in favor of the tree canopy and speak for the birds who need that trees to have houses themselves. Thank you.
Joan Thomas, then Tara Lucky.
My name is Joan Thomas. I live in the unincorporated Snohomish County bordering Bothell, Briar and Kenmore. I am one of the founding board members of the nonprofit Save Bothell. And I'm not sure that you as commissioners have heard about our fight on our behalf down there. I have spent thousands of hours reading thousands of documents over the last year and a half since we started the organization to oppose a new development on the old fruleen sand and gravel pit. That is, we are not, none of us, we have, we have posted two petitions to the county council and to PDS staff. We have been in constant communication with the project manager at PDS, Josh Mash Mack. I have met with some of the council members, I've spoken to them. And it has been a needless to say, a frustrating process that we haven't felt we have been heard. We have been presented very factual and scientific information and and that's not my point this evening is as far as that for the planning commission. But we have not understood that property is about 20 acres. It is a very steep hill. We're at 228th. If any of you have traveled there, it looks like you're familiar with the area. It is not serviced by because we are just outside of Bothell. It's not serviced by Bothell Services. It's serviced by Snohomish County. The first meeting that we had as a community with the developer was Snohomish County Sheriff was there and said, our problem with providing infrastructure services of police is and sheriff is because we can't hire. We don't have enough money to match the bonuses that other departments are giving. Fire Department is probably understaffed. They're talking about adding 1,500 minimum people to that place with less than 900 parking spaces. And so, and I can provide all of this information in more detail, but looking at that property was rezoned in 2004, part of the 2004 growth management planning then. Only that property was. It seemed very odd when it is surrounded by over two miles of no other growth that is they're looking at placing eight five story apartment buildings on that property. They're looking at 3,000 more cars on that hill that is already backed up. And so we would urge you, and I I said, I'll send you all this stuff. We'd urge you not to, I mean, to get involved and not cover that place. And as a joke, we could plant 500 to 600 trees there and that would help our tree canopy area also.
Tara Lucky, then Steve Ging.
Hi, my name is Tara Lucky and I'm at 930 Sunnyside Boulevard in Lake Stevens. And I am a farmer with 75 acres of land right next to Sunnyside. We do rotational grazing with cattle and we have a family that leases land to grow flowers and vegetables for local farmers markets. I oppose the annexation of the area right above us off of Sunnyside Boulevard for several reasons. Number one is because as as Ruth, a neighbor of mine, and Paul pointed out earlier, that area, there's a lot of protected area, protected critical areas there, salmon burying streams and a lot of natural woodland. And it's really important that we protect those critical areas. Also, there are a lot of stormwater issues in for the lowland ag. There has been, there's been so much upland development that the the stormwater issues we face is just has increased exponentially. We have a a stream that the sediment from off the hill, our our pond has to be dredged every couple of years. The last time we got it dredged, there was a pile of sediment larger than our taller than our second story home. And that is all coming from off of the hill. So that will only increase if there's more development. And and thirdly, the that road along Sunnyside is is very dangerous. And there's been, it's it poses a great risk to our community. Just last week, I was in our barn. I heard a crash. I put on a safety vest. I ran up to the road. A lady had flipped her car over. And I called 911. It took 35 minutes for the police to arrive. And it was myself and one other neighbor that helped. And this is not the first time. This has happened like many, many times over where my husband's pulled people out of cars, things like that. So the road is very dangerous and I don't think it can sustain, you know, more development. And then I also, I want to encourage the urban tree canopy policy as well. I also, for 10 years, I I was the executive director of the Environmental Science Center and also worked for the stormwater or for the Snohomish Conservation District and got to assist with the urban tree canopy toolkit. And it's an amazing resource. If that had been implemented in the past, I know that our property would have a lot less sediment on it now. So for all those reasons, I oppose the annexation of that the or extending the UGA into the area above Sunnyside and keeping it R five. Thank you.
Steve Ging, then Stephen Griffin.
Thank you for your stamina in listening to us all. My name is Steve Gins. I am fortunate to live overlooking Lake Ballenger in Mount Lake Terrace. Today, climate change is one of the many issues to consider in the 20 years Snohomish County 2024 Comprehensive Plan. By 2044, climate change will be the overriding issue in the next comprehensive plan. Though one county can have little effect on this massive problem, we should bear in mind a couple of simple formulas. Concrete and asphalt equal hotter conditions. Trees equal cooler conditions. Though the proposed plan encourages urban tree planting, these, the new trees planted will take decades to mature, but Snohomish County has millions of mature trees, though many, many of these are on privately owned lands. In my neighborhood, I used to pass lovely woodland of five or six acres where a pair of owls nested. One day I was shocked to see that every tree in that grove had been taken down and the acreage had been scraped clean of all life. The developers' plans had been approved by the county with no mitigation whatsoever. This simply can't go on. Snohomish County, like countless other municipalities, has not come to terms with the existential threat posed by climate, the climate crisis. In 20 years' time, there will be much whaling and gnashing of teeth that we fail to preserve forests in the county. The new comprehensive plan fails to adequately protect wildlife in the county. Presently, the presence of only a handful of protected species can stop a forest tract from being developed and only then if the land owner reports their presence. If owls, billiated woodpeckers, golden eagles, or any bird other than a bald eagle are present in any area that 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 will not stop development from proceeding. If red foxes, black bears, cougars, bobcats, bats, deer or elk, den or browse or hunt on a particular track, there is no restriction on scraping that site down to the bare earth. This doesn't even include the worms, beetles, ants, bees, and other invertebrates that underpin the web of life that supports us all. Though the proposed plan is full of ideas, what is lacking is a vision. Must we all live in an endless, inad, endless landscape of tract houses where our only chance of getting in natural setting are hours drive?
That's time.
That was time. Okay, thank you.
Stephen Griffin, then Susan Bore.
I'm Stephen Griffin and I want to thank you for your time. My main concern is motion 22090. I live in the Bothell area right off of Sunset and Stomy Road. And so currently, when I first was looking at the area about seven years ago to move there with my family, I came to, I had aspirations. I had aspirations to develop until I found out I enjoy land. And what I found out during those aspiration times is that the water and the sewers stop right at Sunset. And everything west of that, oh, sorry, east of that. Yes, thank you. East of that is considered to be UGA and not part of the water or the sewer. And in order to live in that area, you have to have a septic system. You have to have a well. And my main concern is, is that if we expand the UGA in that area is that the adverse effects to the well. Right now, that is our main way to get water, main way to live in our area. And in our small community, even though we have, everybody has a good chunk of land or to live there, they have to have a septic system and well. I was on a planning meeting last year and it was brought up to that that group that the development in that area just south of where I live ruined their well. And so that person wasn't able to live there or develop or anything at that point because they weren't part of the UGA. It was basically the land was useless. My main concern is if we were going to expand the UGA in my neighborhood and my well is ruined, who's going to pay for that? Is it me? I understand that there could be water brought down to this, but this is my my choice to live and to use the well, the perfectly good well that we have, than to be forced to hook up to city water. So my main concern again is who's going to pay for that? Is that me? Is that the developers? Is that the county? I don't know. That's basically my, it's well, if that does ruin my water, it's adverse effect to myself. So, and my family and the people that live in the area. So that's all. Thank you.
Susan Bore, then Soulmann Mohammed.
Hello, thank you. My name is Susan Bore. I have a five acre parcel in Clearview, Maltby area. Moved there in 1983, raised my family there. We did love the trees. No doubt about it, even when they landed on our house and caused a few problems. But the trees were great for those of us who live in Clearview. Over the years, the five acre. Well, when we moved there, it was, we could have subdivided if we'd had the money and wanted to go to a lot of work into one acres. There were a few developments that happened in those first couple of years we were there. Then it was changed to two point, R 2.3 and then R five and then R 10 and back to R five and back. So I've watched all that. There are some very lovely estates in Clearview, very lovely estates with beautiful homes on two to five acres. It's a very landed gentry that lives there. And people who are just fortunate to get in early, like me. My concern is not as much for the trees as much as I do love them. My concern is for children. The county, anyone who sees it can see that the emphasis seems to be keep everything wooded and forested here and make everybody else live in apartment buildings and townhomes. There's no room for trees there. There's only places to rent. And people live in very high density places when there could be a compromise, a compromise when you take Clearview, Maltby, there could be developments that did keep the trees in the neighborhood that did allow for people to have bike paths and sidewalks and trees. And they wouldn't have to be half acre lots. Instead, Bothell Everett Highway, 164th, everything, it's just apartment buildings and that's the wave of the future. Because that supposedly protects you from urban sprawl of homes. When really all it does is create a whole lot more traffic in a very concentrated area. The children who grew up in those places don't have what my kids had. And that's sad to me. In the parts of the world where urban development has allowed high, high density houses, housing in other countries and in our inner cities. It's not good for the environment. It's actually terrible for the environment. You don't have to go to Calcutta. You can just go to Chicago or Baltimore to see what it turns into.
Ten seconds.
Rental property instead of homes in reasonably tight, tight spaces, but allowing for homes to have trees and for people to buy their property. Thank you.
Soulmann Mohammed, and then our last in-person public testimony is Thay Moore.
My name is Sulaiman Mohammed and I'm living at First Avenue in Bothell, Washington. But I will give my spot to somebody else to speak. And I'm just listening today and I will give my detailed message next time. Okay, thank you.
My name is Thay Moore and I live in unincorporated Bothell, the southern side, south of Mill Creek. I've lived there here for a 19 year resident. And I encourage the council not to expand specifically with Alternative Three, the high growth expansion based on the need to catch up, allow the infrastructure to catch up for the growth that we've already seen in South Snohomish County. During the time that I live, I've lived in the area, the population has more than doubled. In fact, from 2018 to 2021, South Snohomish County, the particular area where I live was actually the highest fastest growing area in the entire nation. Interestingly, my property taxes have quadrupled in that time, which is a well outpaced inflation. And I assume that the the tax revenue growth has been considerable. Yet the roads have not been expanded. They've not been improved. The roads like 164th, 180th, 35th, Sunset, these roads have not changed in the 20 years I've lived here. The schools have not been able to keep up. Woodside Elementary replaced all of its outdoor play area with portables. Cedarwood has is full of portables. The brand new Tambar Creek Elementary, which is near my home, had a portables installed within 12 months of opening the school. It's already bursting at the seams and adding portables into that area. My children go to Jackson High School where it is overloaded and in disrepair. Where they tell me that there's leaking roofs. There's a long term missing panels in the ceiling. There's rusty water in the drinking water and there's many portables there as well. The area of unincorporated Bothell has a traffic pinch where if you're trying to get out to the freeway, you either can go down Bothell or Highway for a half an hour, or you can go up 164th, which is regularly an hour to get up there during heavy commute times. The traffic along the curve there, I five through Linwood is the slowest section of north from north of Seattle. I know I work in Seattle and I commute down there. 80% of my time commuting to Seattle is just getting to Linwood. I'm happy to take buses. I look forward to the train when it gets here. But again, that's only going to cut out a few minutes of my time. Most of my time will just be getting over to that train. The, none of the buses actually get me up there, so I have to drive up there. And if I was to take a bus, commute several miles over to get to a bus, that would then take me 90 minutes on that bus to get up to the transit center. So so the buses aren't really helping me in that way at all.
Ten seconds.
Aggressive expansion with more homes and high density housing without infrastructure improvement is not sustainable. Thank you. Aggressive expansion with more homes and high density housing without infrastructure improvement is not sustainable. Thank you.
That's it for the in-person testimony. There are currently 11 people online wanting to testify.
Okay, we're going to switch over to online testimony.
Yes, David, go ahead.
So if I might make a suggestion here, since we are at a little bit of a breaking point here, maybe take a 10-minute break for everybody here, and then we'll resume with folks who are joining us online and want to provide testimony.
Let's reconvene at 7:32, 7:30? Okay, it's 7:33, and we will reconvene our public hearing. And at this time, we will start taking testimony from the public online. Megan, go ahead and call the first person.
The first person to raise their hand was Kristen Kelly. So Kristen, right now I'm promoting you to a panelist. All right, Kristen, if you can unmute yourself.
Did that work?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kristen Kelly. I'm here representing the organization Futurewise, and I appreciate five minutes because my internet's kind of shaky, so hopefully it'll keep working. Tim Trinhavich, who's the Director of Planning and Law for Futurewise, he sent in our comment letter on Friday, and it covers an array of our concerns and recommendations to do with the update. But I'm going to try to quickly summarize some of those for you. So we support the urban tree canopy goal and policies which have been, which have many benefits that will protect human life, the environment, and helps taxpayers. Plus, as you know, have noticed, there is huge public support for these policies. We support Alternative 2, without urban growth area expansions, which are not necessary and are not compliant with the Growth Management Act. We recommend changes to policy 6.8.1 that will ensure rural population growth allocation is consistent with the CPPs and Vision 2050. Currently in the policy, the trigger for action if the rural population target is overshot comes years too late for any meaningful action to be taken. This adversely impacts the environment, taxpayers, farmers, and foresters. We support a policy that will address wildfires and what measures the county will actually take, rather than just a laundry list of what the county might do. We support policy 7.d.8. Agricultural ten zoning and county policies do not adequately protect working farms. Thus, the policy as amended will better protect farms and farmers. We support the expansion of receiving areas in the Transfer Development Rights Program to include development of single-family home and townhome subdivisions, which will better protect farms and farmers. We support adoption and implementation of an inclusionary housing program to increase the production of affordable housing in appropriate urban designations and zoning. We do not support policies allowing urban level of service standards for rural arterial roads, which would negatively impact our rural areas, farms, and forests. Any rural road that feeds into Highway 9, 2, 522, or Interstate 5 are at risk of having urban level, urban level of service standards from too much commuter traffic and too much rural development.
10 seconds.
I got five minutes, I thought. Regarding the docket proposals, we recommend denial of DR 1, LS 2, Malt 1, Mon 2, MV 2, and SW 14. We recommend approval of SW 10, SW 12, and SW 17. We recommend denial of all urban growth area expansions by the county council in their motions or, and their amendments, as they will have adverse environmental impacts and are not needed and are not compliant with the GMA or Vision 2050. And those motions include 22 point, or 22-090, 095, 098, 099, and 134. So I urge you to read our letter before you start your deliberations in November, and, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Are you there?
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you. I, I hope I didn't cut out too much.
Okay, next we have Mickey Gunderson. And Mickey, you should be able to talk now if you want to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, I too am representing a community group, the Hilltop Locust Community Group. We live in the southwest urban growth area near Damson Road and Locust Way. And we've been an organization for 26 years. I've been the president, the main organizer for all of those years. And, you know, I, for such a long time, I wanted to get a tree ordinance, and it took from 1997 when I started until 2009. And at that time, I was called in by a council member to look over the, the tree ordinance, which I did and added some things, and some things that he wouldn't add, and, and I said, why not? And he said, well, the developers will never go for that. And I, I said, well, what do they have to do with it? So even after 12 years of working intensely with lots of people, including Kristen Kelly, I was still in my own self naive about who, who really has a main effect of, of what happens in our county. And people don't understand that. And so when something happens, like trees get cut down next to them, or what happened to myself, roads get cut off of my trees and the trees die, people just don't understand this. So I hope you guys, you know, I thank you for your, your work, and I appreciate all the work that's gone on this urban tree canopy policy. And I hope you understand that so many people don't know what's going on. And when they figure it out, they're too late to do anything about it. And everybody wants trees. I've, I've worked with thousands of people. Everybody wants trees. And so I even have a friend that's very depressed. This person doesn't know how to live on a dying planet. That's what I was told. And so this is really traumatic for people. So I want you to know that, that we and I really support the urban tree policy. I support what Christian just talked about with Futurewise. I also support the Pilchuck Audubon Society, of which I am a member. And I support what Bruce Barnbaum had to say, especially about the fireworks, because we have those same issues. Let's see. People spoke so beautifully today, and I didn't write mine out like a lot of people did, but I have a lot of different things I want to talk about here. So I have three and a half acres, and I've lived here since 1962. I wasn't five years old when I came here either. And I don't know what to do with my property. I don't want the trees all cut. I don't want to donate to the county because I'm afraid they'll just sell it to a developer. But I have three and a half acres of trees. And last summer, I put on a jacket because it was cool, too cool for me to walk. And I got down the road to where all the development is, maybe 150 feet, and I had to take the jacket off. And, and that's, and my house doesn't get warmer than 78 degrees when it's really, really hot outside, because I have these gigantic trees. So there's just so many important things. But I've planted a lot of trees, because after the developments went in, the trees that were overhanging my property, I realized weren't really mine. And then blackberries moved in. So I've been trying to get blackberries out of some of the areas, not all of it, and not all of the areas blackberries. And I've planted small trees. And you know what? They're not growing. And I'm watering. And last summer, my highest water bill for two months was $600. And I'm not on sewer, so that was all water. And this summer, this last highest water bill was $560. And I feel really guilty about using all that water, but I thought, well, nobody said anything yet. Of course, now they have. And I can't keep that up because I can't keep pulling hoses through all that forest. And those trees are not growing. And I have, almost all my cedars are dying. I'm up on the top of the hill. I'm about, I'm about 1,000 feet east of Swamp Creek, and I'm about 150 feet up in the air, higher than Swamp Creek. And when they built the developments, they took all the water off my land. They piped it all, so my land is dry. That's why I'm watering. But all these new trees are going to get planted, like I was reading in the paper about the trees are going to get planted in the areas where people don't have trees, which I think is fabulous. But I don't think they're going to grow. And I used to tell my environmental friends, you know, one of these days, they're going to dig up all the sidewalks and blacktop and plant trees. And I thought, that's going to be just hard. But I didn't think about the fact that I don't think the trees are going to grow big, because we've had so much rain all these years, and our trees are gigantic. I have many, many trees that are over 125 feet on my property. Without the water, they're not going to get that big anymore. And this is why we have to stop cutting trees, and we have to stop clearcutting in developments. We have to plan so that the people that move in can have trees. We have to plan to, to save the spaces where the trees are. So I'm really for this urban tree canopy policy. And let me think if I said, have anything else to say here. Anyway, I've, our group has spent, many of the groups that I belong to have spent hundreds of thousands.
10 seconds.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars going to court trying to save trees. And sometimes we can, and some times we can't. So I'm really excited, and I thank you for your work, and I thank all the people that worked on this tree canopy policy. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Ms. Gunderson.
Thank you. And next we have William Leiter. William, you should be able to talk now if you want to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'm, can the clerk put up page three of my comments on the screen?
I'm sorry, no, I don't have access to your comments right now to put them up on the screen.
All right. Well, thank you. That's unfortunate. My name is William Leiter. I'm a professional civil engineer. I've lived in Snohomish County for 45 years. I'm here to talk about the, the, to echo what everybody else has said about protecting wildlife and tree canopy, and to, you know, holler out about the scrape and rape development policy that's promoted by Planning and Development Services in Snohomish County. In my comments on page three, I have photographs of priority habitat and species areas. PHS areas are allowed to be protected under the Growth Management Act, and all it would take is one sentence in the county code to say that PHS, Priority Habitat and Species Areas must be protected, just as wetlands are currently protected today. One, one sentence would protect vast swaths of wildlife corridors that are being mowed down by developments like, that are shown on page three of my comment letter. The Ironwood Development, I have before and after photographs of the cleared forest. The Bexley Ridge Project, before and after, pictures of the cleared area. And then the proposed 14th Avenue Extension Project from 228th Street to, to Larch Way that the PDS had proposed to develop. And myself and other people were able to raise enough community ire to force Public Works to abandon that project. All of those projects are, Bexley Ridge, Aravale, and Ironwood were all courtesy design of your Planning Commissioner Merle Ash. I wish he was here tonight to hear it directly from me. But he's one of the primary promoters of the scrape and rape policy. And as such, as profiting from that type of development, should recuse himself under the Ethics Code of the Planning Commission from voting on this matter. It's important that the priority habitat species areas be maintained so that wildlife have a corridor to migrate through, because having little isolated islands are worthless. They have to be connected to be of use to wildlife. The other specific comment that I request that I had was to require that 75% of all significant trees, as defined in the county code, be retained on any urban forest developed area. This would immediately, between these two issues, protecting the priority habitat and species area and maintaining 75% of all significant trees on a property, would immediately protect the urban canopy that we're all so concerned about. People have moved here. I moved here in part because of the forest and the rural aspects of it. Obviously, a lot of that's now gone.
That's true.
In South County. However, if you don't want us to end up looking like Southern California, do something now. Protect priority habitat and species areas and limit the removal of significant trees on developed property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leiter.
Barbara Ford. You should be able to talk now if you want to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. My name is Barbara Ford, and I live in Edmonds. And I'm here to speak up for trees. So I guess you could call this my tree plea. For five, my five-year-old grandson has been enrolled for the past two years in a forest school here in Edmonds. They attend come rain, mud, or snow. He has learned the value of trees by running around the forest, listening to and learning about specific bird calls, learning the names of animals and trees, and just enjoying being out in nature. One day last year, I took Nash to the Edmonds Toy Store to pick out a Christmas present. There were so many choices, Legos, puzzles, pogo sticks, et cetera. He quickly chose binoculars. I was frankly surprised. Why, I asked? So I can see woodpeckers in the trees, Alma. I ask you to please, for our grandchildren, recommend the urban tree canopy policy to the Snohomish County Council without weakening it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Barbara Stellar.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Barbara Stellar. I live in Edmonds, and I speak on behalf of the Interfaith Climate Action Group to uphold the policies for preservation of the urban tree canopy in unincorporated Snohomish County. We've heard that trees are an outstanding, life-giving resource. I am channeling Shel Silverstein's The Giving Tree and Joni Mitchell's Song, Big Yellow Taxi, particularly the lines, they took all the trees, put them in a tree museum, and they charged the people a dollar and a half just to see them. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? They pave paradise and put up a parking lot. Or they cut down the trees for housing units and named streets after them. It's obvious trees are valuable, both for their harvested cash profits, think lumber, paper products, heat source, plus multiple other items humans rely upon, and for their unharvested, quiet presence to sequester carbon, cool the environment, capture stormwater runoff, and provide habitat for wildlife. We must weigh carefully the decimation of trees, urban or otherwise, for human needs, greed, and development, against protecting mature trees for the mitigation of climate change and the healthy preservation of the earth and all its inhabitants. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stellar.
We have David Toyer next.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thank you for your time this evening, David Toyer. With Toyer Strategic Advisors, our firm is a largest economic development consulting firm, and we represent one of the docket applicants, as well as a couple of other properties that are in areas considered under council motions for expansion. My address is over here in Lake Stevens, Washington, at 10519 20th Street, Southeast, Suite 3. I've submitted a few letters to the record in regards to both the NV2 docket proposal, as well as the RNK property and the Williams properties. The letters that I submitted on our Um the letters that I submitted on R N K and Williams are showing up in the D E I S folder, not in the uh commission comments uh folder. And they probably should be under the comments folder as opposed to the D E I S uh folder uh just as a kind of housekeeping uh item. Uh in regards to the Williams property, it's sixteen acres just on the boundary of the Lake Stevens U G A uh and included within the areas discussed in motion twenty-two zero nine five. Uh the sixteen acres are bordered on multiple sides by existing urban growth. Uh and adding it and a couple of properties next to it wouldn't add much to the Lake Stevens U G A, uh but it would square off the boundary, which makes a whole lot of sense. This is in an area that's the top of the hill. It does not take access off the Sunnyside, would not have access to Sunnyside Boulevard. Um and it makes a lot of common sense uh just to square that boundary off there uh given the availability of utilities around uh two of the four sides of the property. Uh as far as the R N K property goes, is off of one hundred and sixty-ninth. It's in the southwest U G A. Uh it is under uh docket or excuse me, council motion twenty-two zero nine zero. Uh it's seven point five acres uh immediately adjacent to the urban growth boundary. Um and adding it to the U G A would not uh add uh substantive uh impacts. Um but it uh it it would be a logical extension of the boundary in that particular location. The thing I'd like to focus the the greatest amount of my time on this evening, though, is the M V two application, which is the Marysville two application for a hundred and eighty-four acres in Marysville to change it uh from rural to light industrial. It is bordered on the west side by the B N S F railroad track and on the east side by sixty-seventh. Um it is immediately adjacent to a regionally designated employment center, one of only two in Snohomish County. And employment centers of this type are where seventy-five percent of growth in the future, employment growth, is supposed to be focused. Additionally, it's straddled between Marysville and Arlington, both of which are designated high-capacity transit communities. And we all know that North County, really anything uh north of Everett, has struggled to get sufficient jobs, especially living wage jobs um that could be able to support the population that's at the north end of the county. And we think that this is an opportunity to ensure that the long-term longevity, sustainability, et cetera, of that employment center is maintained by adding this property. Moreover, thank you. I appreciate it if you take a look at our letter and the points that we've we've raised.
Thanks, Mr. Toyer.
Next, we have Scott Johnson.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Scott.
Hi, uh my name's Scott Johnson and I live at two four zero two nine Forty-Fifth Avenue Southeast uh near Bothell in unincorporated Snohomish County. Uh my wife Katie, my three children, Tucker, he's seven, Hannah age five, and Kaylee age five, also they're twins. And I are against the future land use alternatives that rezone and promote development of our area, mainly alternative three. Uh we moved to our house because it's unique country feel, even though we live uh very close to between the cities of Bothell and Woodenville. Uh our area is beautiful. Uh we have historic trees, apple orchards and horses on both sides of our property. But we believe the rezoning um through future land use alternatives will adversely affect our current property and nearby surrounding areas. So what do you not wish to see? Uh is we do not wish to see large housing developments in our backyard and the increased traffic uh that it will bring. Currently, our uh four-house shared gravel driveway that enters at a five-way stop at the intersection of Forty-Fifth Avenue Southeast and two hundred and fortieth. Um sorry, uh we have a gravel driveway that enters at a five-way stop between Forty-Fifth Avenue and two hundred and fortieth uh Street Southeast. The five-way stop is already extremely busy with increased traffic due to the city of Bothell's current rezon or recent rezoning. And there's a massive number of houses that have been built within the last five years um off of Forty-Fifth Avenue and more housing will only make the traffic worse and less safe for our children. Um oftentimes, the morning backup off of Forty-Fifth Avenue Southeast exceeds like a half mile to the north. Additionally, our property has amazing stars at night. Um our backyard is extremely dark at night and the stars are really amazing. We believe rezoning and future uh further development of the area will bring additional light and therefore unnecessary light pollution to our backyard area. We want to continue to view the stars um with our children. Development or rezoning of the area will not allow this. In conclusion, please do not rezone our area and please help us protect our beautiful piece of land and under believable night skies. Uh thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson.
Um next, we have, it's just initials, N C K.
Oh yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. So my name is Nick Carthas. Um I live in unincorporated Snohomish County on one hundred and sixty-ninth Street, just east of Sunset Road. Um I am here to express my strong support uh for the Southwest U G A expansion area, propose an alternative three. And uh furthermore, would like to recommend for this portion uh of proposed growth to be included in alternative two. I'm speaking specifically of the area near Sunset Road. Um just a little background for context, uh the property that I live on currently lies in the urban rural transitional overlay on one hundred and sixty-ninth Street, east of Sunset Road. In the last decade, the area around us has drastically changed. Um a once quiet and beautiful rural landscape is now inhabited by uh so many homes along our property line, obstructing what was once a magnificent prospect of the westward Olympic Mountains. As property owners on the U G A line, um we do not reap any of the benefits of the growth but are directly impacted by the consequences of increased population around our home. And that includes noise, road traffic and trespassers, just to name a few. Now, beyond my unique personal um investment in this particular proposal, there's also a logical aspect to this, which many people have brought up already uh during this um hearing. Uh a lot of that includes what is currently proposed in alternative two to increase density in already developed areas of the county. Uh instead of moving toward areas where my home is, where there's acreage and property owners willing to sell, where new infrastructure could be incorporated to uh properly, you know, house the folks that would be coming in. A lot of the proposal is to increase density in developed areas that are already burdened um with lack of infrastructure. So from a logical standpoint, um it makes more sense to push these uh new builds outward rather than put you know apartments or or condos in already existing plots. Uh furthermore, many of the plots that are outlined in uh proposal two are plots of land that would, quite frankly, never be sold because it's not economically viable for a developer. Uh someone earlier had mentioned, you have a swath of folks who got into nice pieces of property at, you know, under five percent on homes that are probably now worth upwards of two million dollars. And the economic sense for a developer to come in and purchase a piece of land like that, just to put a few more houses on it, um it just wouldn't make any economic sense. And in my opinion, that inhibits the growth that is being targeted uh in the current proposals. That's all I have to say. Uh thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Scott Johnson. Scott, if you want to unmute yourself, it's your turn.
Hi, sorry, this is actually Katie Johnson, not Scott Johnson, um but I also live um at two four zero two nine Forty-Fifth Avenue Southeast. And I just, I don't have, um I am a a nurse. I work in Seattle. I have three kids that you heard about from my lovely husband. And what my primary concern, I I support what everyone's saying about the tree canopy. And I know there's just an intractable number of tangles to try to figure out where people need to go because people need homes and there's land here. And obviously, you've been working so hard on this. I don't have to tell you any of that. My concern is in particular Forty-Fifth Avenue Southeast um in our intersection at two fortieth. And that's along the the uh what's already been redeveloped with Bothell. And then um this this area, our unincorporated area. My primary concern is that it lies on the boundary between the city of Bothell and Snohomish County. And as such, there's very little sense of jurisdiction on that road. My primary concern is if we move to alternative three and start developing the land on the um the west side, uh the, excuse me, the east side of Forty-Fifth Avenue Southeast, we're gonna turn an an already very unsafe situation for my children in particular and me in particular, as a walker along that road, um even more unsafe. Um I I would urge, you know, not adopting proposal three if possible. But if so, please, somewhere in the planning, there needs to be better sense of jurisdiction over who owns the intersection of Forty-Fifth and two fortieth and that Forty-Fifth Avenue Southeast, because right now it is, it feels very unpoliced. I personally watched a car almost run a child over at a bus stop with the bus stopped. I've been run over twice crossing that intersection. And my concern is that the level of growth that is kind of brought would be brought by um alternative three is not sustainable for that roadway. Um and and I I'm just really worried about my kids. I I don't want them to get run over. I want them to continue to be able to be safe and walk to their friend's house and play. And that's my primary concern as a mother. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for all your efforts. Um I I can't thank you enough for the time and energy that you're pouring into this. And thank you to everyone who's commenting. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson.
Next, we have Holly Hernandez. Holly, if you unmute yourself, it's your turn. Holly, do you have any testimony you want to give? Okay, I'm gonna go to the next person and Holly, we can come back to you in case it's a uh tech problem. Jody Heath. Jody Heath, it's your turn if you want to unmute yourself. Okay, I'm gonna move on to Kathy. Kathy, if you want to unmute yourself, it's your turn.
Hi, I'm Kathy Hamilton. I've lived on my property for over four decades in Mount Lake Terrace. And I totally agree with the comments made by League of Women Voters, Sierra Club, Pilchuck, Audubon, Futurewise. Please support the urban tree canopy. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Henderson.
Next, we have Kay Noble.
Hi, my name's Kay Noble. I live in unincorporated Snohomish County with a Linwood address. I have lived in the same house for forty-three years near Martha Lake Elementary School. It's in an area where alternatives two and three would change us from U L D R and R ninety-six-hundred to U M D R and R seventy-two-hundred. This is inconsistent with our current one-third acre, single-family home neighborhood and even more at odds with the adjacent neighborhood with up to acre lots. We are on septic tanks. We have open ditch storm drainage, no sidewalks, no parks within a mile. We don't have the infrastructure for this rapid change in zoning. Lest you say it's not that much of a change, we have witnessed automatic approval in zoning from R ninety-six-hundred to R seventy-two-hundred. So can only conclude that a zoning change from the proposed R seventy-two-hundred will easily approve L D M R apartments. We've come to understand that the zoning you think you have isn't the zoning you'll get, what will actually be approved. While I understand the need to increase housing, please concentrate the increased density in the areas that already have infrastructure, infrastructure and are reasonably closer to transit. We are a mile away from the proposed transit station. Allow those of us who moved here for our larger tree-filled lots and quiet neighborhoods to maintain the life we chose. Please leave my neighborhood zone, U L D R, R ninety-six-hundred. Thank you.
Ms. Noble, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What's the cross street where you're at?
The cross street is
The two streets.
Yep, one is uh one, I live at fourteen twenty-two one seventy-second place southwest.
Thank you.
Next, we have Patricia Cartha- Carthas.
Thank you. Um I live on um one sixty-ninth Street. It's unincorporated Snohomish County, Bothell. Um and the property um is on the urban rural transitional area overlay um just east of Sunset Road. Um you heard my son speak a few minutes ago. Um I uh thank you for the opportunity to speak uh on the future land use. And um I actually um request that you adopt alternative three. Our property is included in that as it's in the uh urban transitional overlay. I don't believe it's the same property that Mr. Toyer was speaking of because um I don't know him and I think he, I would know him if he were referring to our property. Um we've been in that property for over thirty years. Originally, it was in the uh growth management area and it was changed. Uh they shifted the line. Um that was in uh two thousand and four. They moved it farther west so that uh we were no longer included in uh the growth area. Um the good news is it's mostly pasture, it's seven and a half acres and mostly pasture. There there aren't many trees and they're mostly concentrated in the back of the property. Um if if a developer wanted to purchase this property, most of it is flat. And um the tree canopy, I'm not familiar with uh that uh the regulations for that. But what I've heard from people speaking, um I I don't think it would affect this property as much. I personally have never understood why they could go through and plow down every single tree and why they couldn't put the tree, the houses in amongst the trees, um probably for cost. But anyway, um I um hope that our property could be considered uh to be included in the uh growth uh area um as it was, we thought, promised back in two thousand and four. Uh I know there are a lot of other property owners that either had either have died or had to move on and they um were disappointed that that didn't happen at that time. Uh I mean, I thank you for um hearing my thoughts on this and I appreciate you spending a long evening tonight listening to people voice their opinions. Um and I know you're in a very difficult position, but I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Carthas.
Next, we have Kay Noble.
I've already spoken. I've already spoken, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Next, we have Laureen.
Hello, um my name is Laureen Bradley. And my family owns uh several acres um off of Alexander Road between Gibson and Central. And um and currently we're zoned R ninety-six-hundred and we're moving to urban core. Well, I hope we're moving to urban core. Anyhow, I just wanna uh really say thank you. And I like I I like the vision of the leaders in the room for um the vision for a vibrant urban core center. Uh we have several duplexes on this large piece of property. And I think there's a great need for housing for people. We we rent to the community and there's a great need for housing. We we rent to the community and there's a great need for housing in this area. So we support. I just wanted to get it on record that we support alternative two or alternative three. And thank you so much for the vision for this community. That's all.
Thanks, Ms. Gibson.
Next, we have someone calling in. It's four two five four eight six thirty four sixty five. If you want to unmute yourself, it's your turn. What?
For the phone caller, I think you need to hit star nine to unmute and speak.
Okay, I think we'll come back to them. Okay, Yevgeny Karpik. It's your turn.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening and thank you for your time today on the twenty fourth of October. My name is Yevgeny Karpik, four two three four Strumey Road. My property is located on the urban growth borderline. The current zoning classification on my property is rural five acres. My property is only two point three acres and it's one of the biggest sized lots in the surrounding area with residential houses. The average size lots in this area are closer to one acre. Nevertheless, the zoning in my neighborhood is rural five acres. This zoning does not reflect reality and prevents the residents within this area to use their properties to their fullest potential. For example, since the zoning is larger than what people own, they cannot build small ADUs on their properties, even if they wanted to, in order to supplement their income to offset the increasing property taxes in the area. Particularly, in my case, I would not be able to build an additional ADU on my property to house fleeing refugees from the war rage country of Ukraine where I'm from. This brings me to my second point. I believe that the number of refugees seeking asylum in the US over the various conflicts, including Ukraine, Israel, which just recently blew up kind of is adding to an already projected growth in the Snohomish County of eleven thousand four hundred sixty two people this year alone, which will put an even greater strain on an already tight housing market in Snohomish County. That is why I urge this council to approve S W fourteen and other UGA expansion dockets, which would help to ease the housing shortages, providing more housing and would bring the vital public services into the areas which would accommodate the natural growth within the county. We must, as a community, come together in order to support and help the displaced people from various regions of this world. And a lot of people are making their way to the United States as we all know. And on the behalf of the Ukrainian community residing within Snohomish County, I thank you for being so understanding as we all navigate the difficult and uncertain times. And I implore you to approve and I support alternative two and three of the comprehensive plan within our region. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Karpik.
Jim Bloss.
Right, thank you. My name is Jim Bloss. I live in Monroe at six one eight River U Drive. I became interested in doing something about climate change and global warming late in life. When it became clear to me that I needed to do to become involved to help to try to ensure that my children and grandchildren will have a planet on which to live. Now, I know I'm not the only person probably interested in this, but but everyone probably has something about these particular issues that they they need to be concerned about. For me, it became clear to me that very early on about the importance of trees in sucking out carbon from our air that we use for breathing. So I'm I'm asking the commission to recommend the urban tree candidate policy to to the Snohomish County Council. Thank you so much for listening.
Thanks, Mr. Bloss.
Next, we have S. Martin.
Hello, my name is Sean Martin. I live in in I have a Woodinville address. I live just above the county line. There's lots to consider, obviously, when trying to plan out particularly with a twenty year horizon, and we want to make sure that we get it right. So I do appreciate all the attention and consideration that's getting. And I appreciate you hanging around so late in an evening to listen to everybody and give everybody a chance to speak. Looking at the three alternatives, alternative one is essentially unrealistic, do nothing. We're not going to have no changes over the next twenty years. You can't really just go with that. It has a lower than the expected population growth as given from the Vision twenty fifty analysis. Similarly, alternative three exceeds the projections by quite a bit. We certainly want to make sure that we make allowances for what's going to happen. But overdoing it, it's, you know, that you can't get the genie back in the bottle. You can't get the worms back in the can. Once you extend urban growth boundaries, they're going to fill. And if not always with all the infrastructure needed. So I'm just here promoting for basically the Goldilocks option, not too little, not too much of alternative two. It follows the projections that there are for the Vision twenty fifty plan. Over the next twenty years, of course, there'll be plenty of times to do reviews like this one and make appropriate adjustments. Whereas if we went, for example, with option three, it's difficult to bring those back. It's not that option two, alternative two would restrict anything to anybody as we see how things go. So I'm just advocating that basically the Vision twenty fifty says this is what we project based upon what we can find out. Alternative two kind of goes along with that. As we go along over the next twenty years, there'll be places for adjustment if we see that that vision, of course, is over or underestimating things. So I avoid do nothing. I'd avoid do too much. I'm here for alternative two. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Martin.
All right, we're gonna loop back to Holly Hernandez. Holly, on the bottom left of your screen, there's a there's a microphone there. You can mute and unmute yourself. If you can unmute yourself, it's your turn. Okay, all right. Next, I want to try Jody Heath again, just in case. Jody, it's your turn to talk. On the bottom left of your screen is a little microphone. If you can unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right. Okay, yay. I live in unincorporated Snohomish County in the Silver Lake area, tenth drive southeast. And we're facing a zoning change from the single family dwellings to multiple family zonings. And all tied in with the future of this area with rail and bus lines at a hundred and twenty eight. The lot sizes on this street are approximately half acres and usually have a modular home on them, a prime area for land development, for urban growth and expansion. But Silver Lake Water and Sewer District has decided that sewer lines and new water lines are needed to come down tenth drive and targeting thirty eight landowners to personally fund this expansion project currently estimated at a hundred thousand dollars each. So I'm voting for no for rezoning in my area. And thank you for listening.
Is your name Jody Heath?
Yes.
Okay, so it's two names. Jody, and then your so your last name is Heath. Thank you, Mrs. Heath.
Yes, thank you.
All right, and the last person we have is Brad. Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I am living
Brad, you're really breaking up.
Is that better?
Yes, that's better. Sorry, Brad, we can't hear you. Do you want to send in a letter? Or you can send in an email to our to our clerk.
Yeah, I sent a letter already and I was just wanting to alternative two. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, alternative two. I encourage you to choose areas that are closer to the south border of the county. Everybody, traffic generally travels to King County. It has to travel through parts of the county that are, it has to travel to the edge of the county. And so the the big area that you chose in your mobile road, I'm all in favor of it, but it just didn't didn't make a lot of sense to me why you chose that area, other than a bunch of the neighbors, you know, wanted to be annexed in. There's lots of other areas. I, in my letter, I encouraged if you included area that's north of Malpe Road, developers would build part of that. They have the forty third expansion that's planned. If you include parts that are north of Malpe Road up to two twelve, then that would you could get developers to build part of that route. It's not they they say it's phase two and I probably play department or the traffic department, they say it's phase two. Anyways, my letter, I'll send my letter in and hopefully look at it. I'm done.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay, we do have one more person who just raised their hand, Kevin Leon.
Hello. Yeah, I'm Kevin Lennon with the Sauk Saddle Travel Council. I was asked to mention that the plans, urban growth plans for Darrington, we were not wasn't even discussed. There's no consultation with us on that. The tribe has lands in those areas, so we have concerns. I was asked to state that we need more time to go over those with the Darrington Council and the Snohomish County Planning. What a tough job you guys have. And I just, I appreciate all the concern for the trees as a Native American. It's been devastating to, I was born and raised in Lake Stevens. It's been devastating to watch the one gentleman put it scraping rape of the earth. It's been devastating to deal with. It's nice to hear so many people concerned about it now. It's something we've been concerned with for over a hundred years, but that was all I wanted to put in there is we I just received notification of this meeting about five hours ago. So I jumped on to, just wanted to mention that. And for all you tree lovers up there, if you want to see thousands of trees getting killed every day, just come up to Darrington and stop at the mill and you'll just see thousands of them getting cut. And like I said, it's been devastating for the natives of America to watch this happen. And I really appreciate the concern about it. So thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thanks, Mr. Lennon.
And that's that's all we have online for testimony.
Okay, at this time, we have heard from the public that's joined us in person. We've heard from those online that want to speak to us. Before I close the public hearing, we should offer one. Go ahead, David.
So, yeah, you've heard from the public testimony here orally. A question to pose to the commission is whether you want to continue to leave the written record open for an additional period of time. I might suggest maybe for an additional week until, say, five o'clock next Tuesday evening for folks that may want to submit additional written correspondence. We'll continue to post those online so they'll be available to you and others, as well as the written materials that were handed today. We got you copies of some, but we'll make sure all of these that were handed in tonight are scanned in and put on the on the web pages as well for folks to take a look at.
There were several times tonight when I wish we could do that. So I'm really glad to hear that staff's willing. And you might want to pick a date, a deadline date tonight.
Yeah, I would suggest that the commission, maybe by a simple motion, just acknowledge to that you want to keep the red record open till, say, five o'clock next Tuesday evening, which is Halloween.
Okay. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous approval. Thank you, David. Before we close the hearing, is there anyone else here who has not spoken tonight that would like an opportunity to talk to us? Come on up, gentlemen. Oh, ma'am. Thank you. But you want to be recorded.
Just for the record, sorry.
My name is Christine Mohar. I have lived in Snohomish County for over fifty years. I've owned property in four different areas. The area I'm currently in is looking at rezoning. And a gentleman came up earlier and talked about one sixteenth and thirty fifth. One example of an issue with rezoning is I had to call nine one one for a life threatening situation back in my shop on my property. It took the firefighters thirty five minutes to get to me. Who got to me first was the officer that jumped over my fence chasing the gentleman who had just taken them on a car chase into the townhomes behind me. And they followed him over the fence. They got to me first. I'm against the rezoning in our area, that one sixteen thirty fifth, one thirty second, nineteenth avenue. Because we already don't have the resources that we need to support the community we already have. We've got people racing through the side streets to get from one sixteen to thirty fifth. He talked about walk down one sixteenth from thirty fifth to nineteenth avenue. I don't recommend it because the gentleman that I used to give a ride to on my way to work was actually five feet off the road. I pulled off the road to give him a ride to work. And just before he crossed, he was hit by a car. The street isn't safe. The area is becoming more and more populated. We had townhomes built right behind us three days after we bought our property. So now the backlight of that townhome looks like the moon shining up between the trees. It's becoming very populated and really unsafe to add more houses to that area. So I am against the expansion for that area. That's all.
And this is east of Silver Lake?
Uh, it's forgive me not knowing north, southeast and west, Rugs Lake.
Rugs Lake.
Yes, we are actually on rugs, right across the street from Rugs Lake. And it's just becoming, even on the dead end where we are, just becoming, people are coming down. I never thought I'd have porch pirates in that area. But yeah, so I'm just against that rezoning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While the public hearing is open, anyone else wish to speak at this time? Anyone else wish to speak? Last call. Anyone else to wish to speak? Public hearing. Public hearing is now closed at eight thirty. And we will adjourn shortly. Yes, David?
All right, so just a little bit of some logistics and procedural stuff here. Now that you've closed the public testimony this evening and agreed to keep the written record open until five o'clock next Tuesday evening. So will the commission will reconvene beginning on November four fourteenth to start your deliberations, recommendations. We do have two additional nights reserved for that. Will be here in this room. It will be streamed online for either you or the public to listen in and participate again. No public testimony at the deliberations. Question from staff to the commission. Is there anything that you would like staff to prepare for you in advance of those deliberations?
Hello, commissioners, any thoughts?
What was that?
Like snacks.
Uh, no. No, not referring No, no, not referring to food. I'm just saying, is there, you know, based on the testimony, based on what you've been hearing, the written materials, our briefings, is there anything that, that you want staff, any additional information that you want staff to, to prepare? Anything that you want to have us have available at your deliberations? We do have, we do have some time here to prepare some materials ahead of time. So just, again, if you don't, if you, if, I know I'm putting you on the spot here. But, and if you do think of something after this evening, you can certainly reach out through Taylor. And we can, we can accommodate any questions that are things that you may have just thought. If there's something you heard tonight or had some things, you say, hey, you know, I'd like staff to, if you could, if you could research that more, put that together, we'd be happy to do that in the time between now and the.
Just in person, right?
Yeah, we will be meeting in person for your deliberations. And you'll also be able to join online as Commissioner Eck and Commissioner James did this evening.
I, I would really like to see maps, large enough scale maps, and we can easily see detail on them. That'd help us articulate our thoughts.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
The question, we have any questions in elements? Do you have any questions to the elements? Do you need to go to Taylor and to pass them on to the elements?
Yeah, so you will, you will, if you have, if you have specific questions on, on any of the material that we presented you on, please send those questions through Taylor. Taylor will then forward them on to the appropriate project manager, who will then provide a response either in writing back to you or will, depending on the type of question that's asked, we may bring the answer to the deliberations.
It's a free, so we don't want to send any amendments?
Rosanna. There you go.
For all of you back there, so any of the, so you don't want us to send any of what I, what you called was amendments? You don't want us to send those or hold those to the meeting? Yeah, let me clear. Thank you for that. So if commissioners do have amendments that they are going to introduce and propose, as we discussed at your meeting on the 26th, you are encouraged to, to the degree that you're able to, send those to Taylor. She'd be happy to send those out to all the commissioners. You can do that ahead of time if you so choose. Or you can certainly bring, bring specific amendments on the, on the evening of the 14th. But if you do have those in advance, we can make sure that they'll get out to all the commissioners.
Thanks very much. Rosanna, Commissioner Brown.
When other commissioners are submitting questions, will those be also sent to the rest of the commissioners?
Yep, we can make sure that any questions that are submitted get circulated amongst all the commissioners. And any responses to commissioner questions always go back to all of the commissioners.
Okay, through email or is it?
Through email.
Okay.
Yep, through email.
Any other thoughts at this time?
Commissioner Eck has her hand raised.
Thank you. All right, so I'm wondering, and I didn't get, I looked at the online comments and I was able to sort by name, but I'm wondering if there's a way to give us a sort by, like overwhelmingly, there was feedback in support of the tree canopy proposals. Is there a way to group it by tree canopy in support, you know, tree canopy? Themes was, we should do this instead. You know what I mean? Kind of without adding a lot of work, is there just a way to create a finer sort on some of the themes that we got?
Sure, we'll certainly, as staff, take a look at, at what we can do with putting them into some categories to make it a little easier. So, yeah, we'll, we'll certainly look into, into that request as staff here.
Thank you.
Commissioner James?
Yeah, two things. Emails go to who? To Taylor or who?
Yeah, they're going to go to Taylor. So send, send your, if you have questions or if you have amendments, send them to Taylor and Taylor will make sure that they get to the appropriate, the appropriate subject matter expert.
Okay, another thing is, yeah, it was, it was really tough going through all the public comment previous, you know, before the meeting. And I ended up probably doing what I'm sure a lot of people did. And that is basically putting them in different folders to figure out what's going on because there were so many tree canopy and so many were the same. I would also like to have just sort of a pro, pro-con, sort of a, you know, we, you know, what is our code now? What is the ideal code? And what is the tree, you know, what, what is the, what are the tree canopy, pro-tree-canopy people proposing? Is it higher than what we have now? And is there someplace in between? I mean, what are the pros and cons of that? And looking at that argument without so much, it was just so much repetition that I never really picked up on anything else this evening. So it'd be nice just to see that kind of outline, just a really simple, here's the data. And it's hard enough for me to explain it. I don't know how you're going to be able to put it in paper.
I, I think, I think I, I understand what you're, what you're asking for, Commissioner James. So I think we can put together some, some additional contextual analysis of the current, current tree canopy regulations and what the policies that have been introduced as part of the complent update, the relationship there. Yep.
Okay, thank you. And just one more thing. Because it's close to home, when the speaker, David Toyer, was up talking about the MV2 docket. I, I like maps as well and I'm just, you know, it's a visual thing to see where they're talking about. And I've seen that, but I'd like to make sure the other commissioners get a chance to see where that's at. It's basically bumps up to the community, to the Cascade Industrial Center. It makes a whole lot of sense to let that go back to that area. But anyway, those are just some of my observations and comments about this evening. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. We obviously couldn't do it without you.
Yes, we'll make sure to have available both to pull up online as well as in the room, like we have the, the copy of the, of the future land use map over there. We'll have, we'll have maps reflecting the different alternatives as well as the council motions and the docket so that we can refer to the, refer to the details there as we go through deliberations. Again, as I mentioned, the 26th, we're working on kind of a, what's the right kind of chronology or pathway in which to, to make the decisions. We're likely going to be, you're likely to be starting with the maps first, working your way through the map amendments and then going into the policy. The narrative changes after that. And I know there's some interplay between those two, but we think based on what happened in the last update, we need, the commission went through this in 2014. That seemed to work pretty well to start with the maps and then move into the, into the policies and narrative.
Thank you, David, for that. Any other thoughts from commissioners at this time before we adjourn? Your motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Commissioner Thomas moves to adjourn. Tom, you have a second. Thank you. All commissioners, sorry. All commissioners, say aye.
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 Thank you, we're adjourned.